Oh my gosh, is that Carl Bierd?
Hey, here we go. Welcome, everybody. It is June 7th, 2023. We are going to convene our regular meeting. If you would, please stand with me while we do a silent invocation and then the pledge of allegiance. Amen. And now for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this world, with liberty and justice for all. I was at a graduation recently, and there was a student who got up to do the pledge of allegiance, and his cadence was so fast, none of us could catch him. I hope that wasn't too bad for everyone here. We have some proclamations that we would like to either receive and award tonight, and we would like to recognize Justin Tran, who is here from Senator John Laird's office, and is willing to give recognition to the city of Morgan Hill for their efforts to support the LGBTQ plus community. Can I come down? What would you like?
It's been destiny perfect. Good evening, Mayor and council members. It is an honor and privilege to speak to you all on behalf of Senator John Laird. The Senator sends his condolences as his obligations in Sacramento prevented him from being here tonight. On his behalf, I would like to present a certificate of recognition from the California State Senate for the city's successful pride flag raising during Pride Month and for helping make visible what is so often unseen or ignored, the experiences of our LGBTQ plus community. So again, on behalf of Senator Laird, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. You're going to present that to... Thank you. I'd also like to read a proclamation proclaiming the month of June as LGBTQ plus Pride Month. City of Morgan Hill is an inclusive community and will continue to build a society where every person is accepted for who they are. LGBTQ plus activists across the country have made tremendous progress to ensure individuals are judged on their character and not by who they love. City of Morgan Hill recognizes the celebration of LGBTQ plus Pride Month and also recognizes that all people in the community deserve to be treated respectfully, fairly, and equally regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity. We also have a couple of other proclamations that I'd like to provide. One is going to be, the first one is going to be to Les Taylor. Do you have a microphone there? I'll come down and... The City of Morgan Hill recognizes Les Taylor for her volunteer efforts supporting the city's Youth Action Council. Les has volunteered countless hours over the last four years mentoring youth, our Youth Action Council members in communication, public speaking, and leadership skills. Her passion and dedication toward the Youth Action Council members and projects have been outstanding and transformative for our community. Les is a tremendous asset and mentor to our youth community. Congratulations and thank you so much. Do you want to say a few words? Sure.
Sure. It's an amazing honor to be able to work with the youth of Morgan Hill and to work with the city that is so inclusive and conscious about what matters about raising a great community. So it's my honor and it's my pleasure, and it wouldn't happen without Chiki and "The Wind Beneath My Wings."
Well, gonna sing a line of that song, "The Wind Beneath My Wings." Are you ready now? Our next recognition is going to be for the parent family. Are they here? There they are. Come on up. Welcome. City of Morgan Hill recognizes Tricia, Nick, and Sean Parent for their volunteer efforts maintaining the magical bridge of Morgan Hill Playground for all visitors. The parent family has spent countless hours volunteering at the playground and have provided leadership to the volunteer program by training numerous other volunteers. The parent family has helped to ensure that Morgan Hill's Magical Bridge Playground is a place for all ages, all abilities, and all people. Thank you so much. Did I say a few words?
Sure. Thank you very much. Like, this wouldn't happen without Chiki, who puts in countless hours to make sure that Magical Bridge is run well. And Tricia does most of the work, being lead volunteer, and making sure the playground is just always clean and very inclusive. So, thank you.
We're now going to move on with our city council reports, and tonight, city council member Rene Spring has the floor.
Well, happy Pride Month, everyone. Thank you. It's good to see you here. A couple of things. One of my assignments on behalf of this council is that I am on the board of the Habitat Agency. That agency has been around for almost 10 years now. I am now the chair of the governing board of that agency. And we meet every few weeks here, actually, in this chamber. If you don't know what the agency does, Google it, look it up on the websites. But also, it preserves open spaces such as the Tilton Ranch, just as we come into Morgan Hill. As one of the great projects, this agency preserved for eternity, so no one can ever, ever build up there again. So awesome work this agency does. Also, this morning, and we meet quarterly, it's the South County Regional Wastewater Authority, it's a great name. It's a joint power authority that we have with the city of Gilroy for our wastewater treatment plant in Gilroy. And I was, this morning, I was elected chair for the next year, so I'll be busy with that assignment. Outside of assignments, I attended the Memorial Day service and thank you Eddie Bowers and team for doing that. Also attended the Open Space Authority's 30-year celebration at the Tilton Ranch. That was another awesome event. Attended a fundraiser for Jonas Way to support the AARF, one of our local animal rescue groups. And if you have never seen Jonas, check out Jonas Way and see how he does fundraising. That person has more energy than anyone else that I know of. And then, of course, last week, last Thursday, we had our seventh rainbow flag raising ceremony just outside here of City Hall. This one was the best ever. First time we did a real Pride Fest here in the city of Morgan Hill. And as your first openly gay elected council member, of course, it's near to my heart. And so many people, so many residents showed up. It was just so heartwarming. And I thanked the city staff, everyone who was involved, the library and all the vendors that came, but also especially all the many residents that came and attended this event. There were a lot of young families from the LGBTQ plus community attending this event. People I hadn't even seen myself yet. So we are here, we're clear, and we stick around, and we need the support from this community. So, well, thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Spring. Now for the city manager's report. Christina?
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the community, my teammates that are here this evening. I have a few comments this evening. The first is today, LaFCO celebrated their 60th anniversary, and so they celebrated outgoing Commissioner Susan Vicklin Wilson. She's from our community, and she has served for 28 years. That's a long time. And so myself, Mayor Turner, and community member and volunteer extraordinaire Doug Muirhead were there, present, and they invited commissioners that had served back to the very beginning of LaFCO, and they gave speeches about the creation. So it was a pretty interesting time today. In addition to that, I'm very, very excited to announce that we received a communication from the CEO of Caltrain announcing expanded Caltrain service. And so part of the VTA Measure B was giving us an additional train, so a fourth train to South San Jose, Morgan Hill, and Gilroy. Not sure if it was Mayor Turner, Mayor Blankley, or somebody else. Fourth train, fourth lane.
Four trains, four lanes.
Yes. So we want not just this fourth training, but we also want four lanes on our highway. But this is, we got to celebrate these steps, and so we're excited about that for September of 2023. I'm going to announce that we will have a Spanish Police Academy, and so this is going to be starting in September. We are advertising it on our website now. The webpage and application are there in Spanish and are active. The first day is September 11th, and it will be held at the Community and Cultural Center. You may have seen that Depot Street is now open through the Community and Cultural Center, and full access to the parking lot is available, and that's just in time for our summer concert series. Summer is just about here. Our spray pad at the CCC is now open. That's free and just a great way for kids to come out and enjoy some fun. And then our aquatic center opens this Saturday. And then my last announcement for today is about our Panthers. Our Panthers are in first place in their division, which is just remarkable. And their next home game is going to be July the 10th at 7:05, is when kickoff is. But most importantly, it's Morgan Hill Fan Appreciation Night. And so look out for information on this about how to get tickets, but we want to see a huge showing of our Morgan Hill community there at the Panther Stadium. And with that, I conclude my remarks.
Christina, yeah, Panthers went from 1-15 last year to the playoffs, it looks like, this year in first place. So, yeah, good things. Very exciting. City Attorney's Report, Don Larkin.
Thank you, Mayor. Prior to this meeting, the council met in closed session for a conference with labor negotiators regarding negotiations with our three represented bargaining groups and our unrepresented management group. There was no reportable action. And then I would also report that I attended the Calcity's City Attorney Conference from May 17th to May 20th, and my office was recognized both for our work on the redistricting efforts and for our successful defense of the council's gun safety ordinance that was adopted back in 2017 or 2018. And that's my report.
Very good. You learned any new attorney jokes? Not that I want to share. Very good. Now for other reports. Do my colleagues, any of my colleagues have a report? Please, Councilmember Yvonne Beltran, Yvonne Martinez Beltran.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to report that I was a member of the Board for SoCon Valley Clean Energy. I went to a conference for CalCCAs throughout the state, May 17th through the 19th in San Diego. We talked a lot on geothermal hydroproducts and continued efforts to reach and educate people on so using renewable and carbon-free sources of energy. On 20th, I spoke with the Latino Coalition to their leadership group of them who had come in on how to get involved and organize your community. On the 23rd, I attended the Employee Oath of Office. It was the largest I've seen in my past five years. It was fantastic. Thank you. On the 24th, we had a wildfire county drill with CalFire, and that was pretty impressive. I learned a whole lot, got to see the new helicopter that they have there. Thank you for that, Chief Wayne. On the 25th, our Public Works, we forget about them, but they do great work out there, and we got to see some of their equipment that they have. Want to thank our Assistant City Manager for the great job. I wasn't even in the country, and I had many messages on the LGBTQ celebration that you guys had here. And I'm really sorry that I missed it. I haven't missed it, and I was disappointed to have missed it, but you did a great job, I heard. So, thank you. I'll be in Pomona for our Housing Policy Committee next week for the League of Cities, and then next weekend I'll be in Monterey for the Latino Caucus for the League of Cities as well.
Very good. If no one else, please, Councilmember Lebers.
This past Saturday, I had the privilege of being at the one-year anniversary for the Magic Bridge Park, and it was very well attended, families everywhere, they had games planned. Hats off to Chris Guion and Chiki, who's left, I guess. They ran a very well-organized event, and there's actually a plaque now that dedicates the park to Ron and Shirley LaCita, who actually were the head of this whole, the fundraising thing that they wanted to do back, I think, seven years ago, and we all were like, how are we going to raise all that money? Well, they did, and it's a beautiful park. I encourage you to visit it, and I was honored to be there to represent the city.
Very good. Thank you. I've got a couple as well. I have a name to the Chair of the Mobility Partnership that consists of three south, it's really a focus on South County roads and transportation issues. There are three South County members, myself, Councilmember, Mayor Marie Blankley, and Councilmember Tom Klein from Gilroy, and then three San Benito County elected officials as well. Focus really is around some of these issues that we face, especially with 101 and 25. That leads me to VTA. At the VTA Board Meeting last week, they are moving closer on the US 101, State About 25 work that's going to be done there. They went through eight resolutions of necessity, dealing with eight properties that needed to be dealt with. And so this is moving forward. It's several years out, but they are making good progress on that. I'm also part of the Santa Clara County Library District, and we approved the 2023-2024 budget. They are also doing free training and giving out Narcan. I'm just reading what they're saying, in partnership with the Santa Clara County Behavioral Services Department and the California Department of Public Health, the Santa Clara County Library District is proud to offer training by community members about how to recognize an opioid overdose and how to safely administer Narcan. Narcan, to reverse an overdose, free trainings will be held at all community libraries this summer and fall. In addition to critical information, attendees will receive a free Narcan dose. You won't be given one. You'll be handed one to use in case you need to use it on someone. And dates and times, of course, will be available on the SCCLD.org website. Also, I'm a LaFCO alternate. There was a LaFCO meeting today. There is an issue that came before LaFCO today with regards to a land acquisition in Gilroy, and the board decided to continue that until the August 2nd meeting. That does it for my report. We'll now move on to public comment. This opportunity for public comment is for items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to make a comment on an item that is on the agenda, please wait until we get to that item to offer your comments. Members of the public are entitled to address the city council concerning any item within the Morgan Hill City Council's subject matter jurisdiction. Ooh, public comments are limited to no more than three minutes, except for certain specific exceptions. The city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Public comment is intended for comments. Questions posed during the public comment are not generally answered. If you have questions, please send them to the city clerk at CCpubliccomment@morganhill.ca.gov to receive a response. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on an item that is not on the agenda?
Yes. Well, we'll start with Doug Muirhead.
Very good.
Good evening, council members, city staff, and residents. I am Doug Muirhead, a Morgan Hill resident. I do want to thank the Morgan Hill Times for publishing my first attempt at this comment back on May 19th. You should feel a little bit of improvement if you read that one. At the May 3rd council meeting under future agenda items, a council member objected to receiving written public comments the day of the meeting. You probably have no reason to read the preamble to the agenda. The timing and handling of those comments is described there. I think you do not understand that your failure to require the city administration to post agenda packets more than the Brown Act minimum of three days is responsible for the timing of some of these comments and perhaps even the absence of others. The public has very little time. A weekend intervenes. To process the agenda packet that the city clerk publishes late Friday for the following Wednesday. I have asked each council over the past decade to lengthen the time for council member and public to review and possibly comment on the upcoming agenda items. Individual members, but never the full council, have also requested this at various times in the past. While sitting in July 2020, the city clerk described a new agenda management system. Both council members and public members responded with requests for longer lead times to review agenda packets and to gather information. As usual, tonight's agenda was post. Good afternoon. We'd like council to direct the city manager to have a work plan item for the city clerk and department heads to implement a longer review period for council agenda packets by the end of this calendar year. Seven days minimum, seven days preferred, perhaps enough time to get a response to a public records request.
Thank you. Thank you, Deb. Anyone else?
Yes, we have Michael Birchfield.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Attorney, City Manager, I would just like to take a moment and read a poem from the Jewish scripture for your encouragement, and then I'm going to share a short prayer. And I think you'll be able to relate to this Jewish poem from their scripture. It says, "Behold how good and pleasant it is when brothers and sisters dwell in unity. It is like the precious oil on the head running down on the beard, on the beard of Aaron, running down on the collar of his robes. It is like the dew of Hermann which falls on the mountains of Zion, for there the Lord has commanded the blessing life forevermore." And I'm going to ask you to join with me for a short prayer. Some of you may know this prayer. It's called the Moll Prayer. And let's go before our great God. Our Father who are in heaven, Hallowed be your name. Your kingdom come. May your will be done in Morgan Hill and Santa Clara County in California and the United States on earth, just like it is in heaven. Give us each day our daily bread. We ask you to forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. And we ask you not to lead us into temptation, to deliver us from evil and the evil one. Yours is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever. I ask your blessing upon this council. Give them wisdom as they serve the community. I pray in Jesus's name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone else?
Yes, we have George Sanchez.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. My name is George Sanchez, and as you can see by shirt and by what's going on in the community, just want to give a face to the name Chachos, and you can assume the rest with that. I'd like to thank each and one of you for giving us the opportunity here in Morgan Hill to be inclusive. The event that we had here in the lawn was amazing. I attended. I am a straight Latino male, and I appreciate everybody's point of view. And that said, aside from being a resident of Morgan Hill for the last 29 years, born in South County here in Willard Hospital in Gilroy, I just wanted to let you know that Chachos is here in the community. We're here to be inclusive. We're here to have open dialogue. We work with the city manager's office with the police department. We have individual conversations with our city councilmen, and we have an open-door policy. So anytime there is an issue, anytime you have a concern, we are here for you. But last but not least, I do want to say that these last several weeks have been really eye-opening for me and for my staff, for my family. We've gotten multiple phone calls, multiple visits. We've been given out a lot of hugs, seen a lot of people cry on our shoulder, gotten many phone calls from many individuals thanking us for what we're doing. But sometimes it's not all that easy. There's always two sides to the coin, and we get that. But nonetheless, I think love prevails, and being on the right side sometimes hurts. So thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Lan Sullivan?
Good evening, members of the council, city manager, city attorney, people in the audience, and people hopefully on Zoom. I'm here representing the leadership class of 2022. On Saturday, we finally transferred the ownership of those new gateway signs. The first north sign is at the current corner of Old Monterey and Monterey Highway, and the south sign is just south of Watsonville Road and Monterey Highway. So we officially transferred with ribbon-cutting signs to the city. The only last things we have to do, and they should be done in about three weeks, is we're going to put solar lighting on both of the signs. So that's still to be done, but that's been in the works. We've got agreement with the city on how to do that finally. So I'd like to thank the people that were involved, either premieres on behalf of the city, accepted the sign. Unfortunately, the city manager and the mayor were both out of town, couldn't be there.
Different locations at different times.
Same name. Yeah, right, exactly, right. And the police department, who had an officer there helping with parking and also let us use the bullhorn because there wasn't a button there to use a regular mic. But it was a great event, a good turnout, and we're very happy to finally get it done and turned over to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds great. Congratulations to the class of 2022.
Two Zoom speakers. I'm going to call Joe Baronowski first.
Yes, good evening. My name is Joe Baronowski. I've been a Morgan Hill resident for 21 years. I'd like to thank Mr. Muirhead for his comments tonight and for the article that he got published in The Times. I think tonight is a perfect example of that. I don't believe personally that there is a more important topic in the city than what is happening with our transportation network. And the item on the agenda later has been in work for many months. It's delayed. It took longer. I understand that. I understand that the staff, especially the person directly responsible for that, had a lot of work to do. And yet, to only get, you know, that posted on Friday is just... It doesn't give residents an opportunity to even respond on one of the most important topics. And the other thing is, it's not just the residents responding to the council members, but unfortunately, the staff also often assumes... the staff also often assumes that things that are incredibly important to the entire community or to certain neighborhoods are not important and they're not noticed. They're not put in the nine, the four one one newsletter. And therefore, the only people who have an opportunity to let the community know about it through social media, through outreach, are private citizens. And it's just not, you wonder why some things that seem important and there's nobody there because people don't even know about it. And it's impossible to expect that residents taking it upon themselves can get the people who are most involved and most likely very interested in saying something to these meetings in seventy-two hours. So I really appreciate Mister Muirhead, your decades worth of trying to to get things in that instance, just post the agenda, even if the other material is not available, post the preliminary agenda. Put any caveat on you that you want, that it could change, is subject to change, blah, 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 but let us know sooner. And thank you again, Mister Muirhead. Thank you.
We don't normally comment on public comment. I will comment on that comment. Simply because that that individual believes that staff is keeping certain information from the public out of the four one one. That's a month or weekly newsletter. That is completely inaccurate. That's just, that's his opinion. Staff here is not going to do anything to keep information away from the public. So. What else?
Jessica Garcia Cole.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to chime in this evening briefly. I currently live in San Jose. However, I grew up in Morgan Hill. I attended St. Catherine's in Burton and was also part of Morgan Hill Leadership as an alumna. And I still go to Morgan Hill on a frequent basis. My family is there. My husband and I come to dine in your restaurants and shop in your stores to this day. And I just wanted to emphasize that I like the direction Morgan Hill is going in terms of your inclusivity. I attended this past week's pride event with friends. And I'll tell you, when I grew up in Morgan Hill, this the climate wasn't what I saw at the pride event. And I really, really encourage to continue going in this direction. I want to thank the council member and school board member that was there. I know a former mayor was also present. And I also want to thank Morgan Hill P D for creating a safe family friendly environment. I was a little bit nervous to attend this event, but overall, the degree to which the community came out and support, the degree to which Morgan Hill P D handled themselves. It was just a really, really wonderful event and I hope Morgan Hill continues to go in this direction. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other comments?
One more. We have Jake Thompson.
Hi, this is Jake Thompson. I have been a Morgan Hill resident since two thousand seventeen, so new here with my husband and I. We both moved here from Atlanta, Georgia, and we are proud to call Morgan Hill our home. And what made us most proud was being able to come to an event hosted by the city last week to raise a flag and recognize that Morgan Hill is a city that is meant for everybody. And the inclusion and the importance of that, as Ms. Cole said earlier, is is important. And and the fact that the mayor Potem was there and different members, trustee members were there. I was just really happy to see that, you know, we did, we made a conscious decision to move to Morgan Hill and it made me, made us appreciate the decision we made and it makes us want to be even more part of the community that we live in. So I want to thank all of you. I want to thank the businesses that were there. Moai and Chachos and all the businesses that represented because that's what truly makes a community. And I hope you all recognize that. I hope to see more of you there next year and thank you for your time.
Good job.
No more speakers.
Good. We will move on to the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as posted? A motion by Councilmember Borjoli, seconded by Councilmember Ivan Martinez Beltran. Yeah, I got it. Did it all, all three, all three of them. All in favor, say aye, aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes five zero. Now for the consent calendar, any members of the council wishing to pull items from the consent calendar? Week now, oh yes, what do you have?
I'd like to comment on one.
Okay.
And I would like to pull, I don't want to get my number wrong. So it's the finance report.
Is this approved revisions to city council policy, the city's investment policy? Is that it? Is that the one? That's item six?
That's it, and item nine.
And item nine or Butterfield Fire Station Project?
Yes, sir.
And then and you would like to comment on item one. First go to the public to see if anyone in the public would like to do you want to comment before the vote? So if you want to, because we can, if it's just a comment after the vote, we can leave it a consent and then council member could come back and make her comment after the, after the vote. Okay, very good. Do we at least want to go to the public to see if any, yeah, anyone in the public wishing to pull an item?
No, I have.
Okay, so let's go ahead and we'll vote then on the consent calendar minus item number six and number nine. Can I get a motion? Motion from Councilmember Borjoli, a second from Councilmember Spring, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. That passes five zero. Councilmember Martinez Beltran, wants to comment on item one.
Thank you. This is accepting the Galvin Park restroom replacement project. And I wanted to just thank Public Works and Chris's team. This came before us and there was a delay to this bathroom happening some time ago. And I know that a couple of council members were worried because we had to use some of the money towards the magical bridge park. And I really want to thank you for making sure that this happened and being sure that it was addressed. And I'm really excited about that. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, now let's go to item six. You're looking for slap report? Okay, very good.
I instruct you, that one will provide a brief report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, that win, finance director. The item is for due to approve the revisions to the investment policies. Finance, cities going to council periodically to adopt some revision that we see necessary. Two revisions in the one presented to you is one of which is the investment firm, a broker that was bought out by another bank, US Bank. Another one is the to ask the council to increase the investment authority to restore from five percent of our investment at the California class to ten percent. And that concludes my presentation and your question, I have the answer.
Thank you, Deb. Any questions by the council? Councilmember Martinez Beltran.
We don't have a question and a comment.
Comment, okay. Hold on, so we don't have a question. I want to we'll come back for comments. At this point, we'll open it to the public for public comment. Any public comments on this item? There being none, we will close the public comment and come back for council discussion. Go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to, the reason that I pulled this was I've had a couple of people inquire about how the city invests and what we're doing, especially with everything going on in the financial markets and the feeling of banks and so because I've had so, I mean, it was, it's interesting to have that dialogue. I thought it'd be appropriate for you to highlight that we are keeping a pulse on things that we are adjusting to market conditions that we've, we've with this and we'll be increasing five percent to include the California class, which our own city manager is a chairperson on the Board of Trustees. So I just wanted people to know that we really do have a pulse on that. So, thank you.
Thank you, council members. If you have other comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve item six. Moved by Councilmember Spring. Seconded by Councilmember Martinez Beltran, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. That passes five zero. Now for item nine, award Butterfield Fire Station Project Larry S. Kent Incorporated D B A Kent Construction in amount of seven million nine hundred fifty-six thousand five hundred cent fifty-three dollars and thirty-two cents. Thirty-two cents in there, that's.
Good evening, Mister Mayor. Good evening, Mister Mayor, members of the council. It's Yacho, senior project manager for agenda item number nine to award the Butterfield Fire Station to Larry S. Kent, D B A Kent Construction in the amount of seven million nine hundred fifty-six thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars. There are six items here for recommendation. The one I'm going to mostly talk about is to award to Larry S. Kent Construction. The project is located along Butterfield Boulevard tucked between the county house and our V and the V T A parking lot. It is a six thousand sixty-five square foot fire station and it'll be our third one once constructed. The project went out to bid in April and we had our bid opening on May eleventh. We awarded the project through our base bid and there were five add alternates. In total, the project is close to eight million dollars. Staff have done a check on Kent Construction and is very satisfied with their construction work. And staff is recommending the award of this project. Any questions? Chris and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions by the council? Councilmember Levers.
Is this Kent Construction of Morgan Hill?
No worry.
You're right, local. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Martinez Beltran.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. So we are struggling with maintaining our parks now. Can you tell me how this will impact us taking the one million? There's three different funds that are impacted. Can you talk about the impact on those funds? There's a million from one, there's the local drainage monies and I think there's also the public fund.
Yeah, there should be no impact on any project delays so that that is a fund balance for all those funds we're talking about. And it won't impact any future projects that we have planned in the C I P. And that's why we're borrowing from those funds. We would, we would pay those funds back, the park maintenance fund and the work facilities fund first and then this storm impact fund, but we believe those will be paid back pretty quickly before the dollars are needed for projects.
Okay, when do we think that we'll pay those back?
So the payback on these and and that might won't come up here, but the payback on these is primarily dependent on the impact fees coming in. We have a lot of development in the queue.
Project or for cumulatively? When you said impact fees, I think you mean, are you saying for this individual project?
We have a public safety impact fee. So that's the impact fee we collect for this. We will collect that. It will pay back all the other funds we're borrowing from. So as development comes in, we'll pay it back, which is actually the correct way to do it to finance it because the fire station is going to serve not only development we've already seen, but new development as well. So it will be using those impact fees from future development to pay back the cost of that.
Okay, the one that I think I'm most concerned about is the park maintenance, is that putting us in any?
It's not going to impact us. We have a fund balance in there. And annually, that fund balance transfers dollars to the general fund to support park maintenance. And we, that will be the first area paid back. So before it impacts the transfer, it will be paid back.
Okay, great. I also wanted to ask, what requirements are there for Kent Construction or anyone else to use? Was there construction here today?
Does not appear to be, no.
Okay. To use twenty-five percent local workforce or apprenticeship programs? Or any type of local training? What are the requirements for that? Or to contribute to healthcare such as we do with our own employees?
Go ahead.
So there is, there is a requirement under state law that for large public works contracts that contractors hire apprentices for any craft or trade that has an apprentice program. So if it's not something that there is an apprenticeship program for, they don't have to hire them, but otherwise they are required to at least make every effort to hire from those apprenticeship programs.
Okay, so the reason I'm asking is because we have the carpenters training facility here in Morgan Hill. It's been here for twenty-five years. And I'm interested in seeing if that's something that Kent Construction can partake in. I mean, I know we've had conversations with the schools and talked about workforce development and I think this is, I want to make sure that we are responsibly using the public dollars.
So we don't specify which apprenticeship program they would hire from, but it makes every bit of sense that they would.
So it could be an apprentice program from outside of Morgan Hill.
It could be, I, you know, I think the high likelihood is they're not going to go very far because they're local companies, so they're going to hire from a local apprenticeship program and not want to have to pay people to.
Well, then, if it is highly likely, I would like to see some type of requirement in the contract that says that, I mean, twenty-five percent is not.
But it's a material change in the contract that we can't do at this point without rejecting all the bids and going back out to bid. So, so we can make the request to construction, but we can't require it in the contract.
That would be, that would be perfect. Along with that, I would like to make a request that we have local hire. Again, twenty-five percent, you know, with our last council, we had some projects and we, we did have some dialogue about desirable to have local hires from Morgan Hill. And I'd like to see us doing that for using our, you know, this is an eight million dollar project.
I'd like to ask some clarifying question on that if I could. When you talk about twenty-five percent local hire, you're talking about in addition to
Addition.
Addition to apprenticeship, is that what you're saying? So fifty percent, you're asking for fifty percent overall. Twenty-five, you're asking for a percentage of the apprenticeship and then twenty-five percent local.
I mean, I guess that would depend, right? But I would ask for apprenticeship. It would be ideal if it could be from Morgan Hill with the Californian and that would satisfy.
And again, I think what I heard, we're going to request it.
Right.
Yep. And so, so with the, in addition, you're asking for another twenty-five percent of local labor, is that what I'm hearing?
No, I mean, if it's, if the apprenticeship were to be required to be here in Morgan Hill, I think that would be a good.
Again, when you say required, we're going to request, we're not going to require, we're going to request. Okay, very good, very good.
Okay, I was, I'm make sure I understand. You're asked, are you asking for a future agenda item? Or change to our templates or are?
No, that's not what I heard, but it doesn't mean you couldn't ask.
I'm asking if we could request from Kent Construction that they incorporate that into their hiring. That would be phenomenal for Morgan Hill. And then as a future agenda item, I would like for us to look at that maybe in our policy so that we continue to do that and kind of raise up.
And we'll bring up a future agenda item at the end of the meeting under that item. Yep.
As, as part of that, you know, we often talk about healthcare for our own employees and contributions to that. That would be something, you know, I'd like to see if we could ask that as well. I don't know if they do. I'm not aware. I have no idea.
So that, that's a component of the prevailing wage with this country, which this contract does require. So I think that's.
Taking care of.
Yes, but good and on the other things we can, we can always ask.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
That's great. That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, council member. Any other questions by the council? Councilmember Spring?
Yeah, I, I, I do agree with my colleague and I thought we had asked our city manager and when you before to, to adjust our templates to gave preference to local hiring.
But there's the local hire provisions that are likely not going to be legal, but we can, so it would be a voluntary thing. On behalf, I think there's the, there was a difference between the local hire and the apprenticeship. There is, you know, the apprenticeship program is something that that is included under state law to a certain extent. Local hire is a little bit more difficult because we, because we're limited in what we can do under state law.
Yeah, my feedback on that always is as my colleague said as well, if I understood that correctly, it's just we should ask and request it and, and really recommend that they do that, all the companies, and no matter what business we do, including apprenticeship, we have a great college here too locally. And if they were to, to work together, right, that would be benefit for the whole community. We had those discussions before, but it's a good, good point to mention it again.
You know, and I'm familiar with Larry Kent and his company and he does work with local subcontractors. One of those subcontractors have the skill and ability to do the job that's required. So he does work, he does work with local.
And I would say there is an incentive to contractors to hire locally because if they And I would say there is an incentive to contractors to hire locally because I, if they don't, they've got to find a place to put those people up and pay for their. Room and board and that's a cost component, so it makes them less competitive.
Right, right, any other questions, council member, good, any other questions? If not, we'll go to the public for any questions by the public, we'll open the uh the uh public comment period, any comments?
I have no public comment.
So then we'll close the uh public comment period and then back for discussion, if no other discussion, then I'll. Seek a motion to.
All move to approve with that request.
Move to approve, second by council member spring, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? None, that passes five zero, thank you. Pretty good, then we will move on to uh public hearings, then we'll, that's, yeah, public hearings. Adopt resolution ordering annual assessments and related actions for city of Morgan Hill. Lance uh landscape assessment district um number one.
Good evening, mayor and council, Carrie Russell, maintenance manager. I am here today to talk to you about the landscape assessment district. There are nineteen different sub areas within the landscape assessment district, each of which we maintain. In varying degrees depending on the fund balance for that assessment district. Tonight, we're proposing fee increases for both Hamilton Square as well as Yaga Sabeda. We've done outreach to both of those subgroups and with more engagement um at Hamilton Square than the other. One of the challenges of the landscape assessment district is this balancing the rising costs for maintenance. Uh, with the fees that we have allocated. Um, so tonight, really, what we're, we're here to do is just open a public hearing to see if anyone has comments. And then adopt the resolution confirming the fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four fee, annual assessment fees. And then ordering the levy for assessments and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions by the council? By none, we will open public, uh, we'll open questions to the public.
I have no public.
We will close the public comment period and again, if there are no comments by the council, I will seek a motion to approve. So motion by council member Bo Gioli, second by council member Spring, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? None, that passes five zero. Thank you, Carrie. Next item, other business, approve Villa Miramonte conceptual site master plan.
Evening, mayor, council members, Chris Gionni, public services director. I'm gonna kick this off uh rather quickly and then uh turn it over to our consultants at uh Jason Architecture to to talk about the. What we're looking at, the city of Morgan Hill has a very, very long history with uh Villa Miramonte and the Morgan Hill Historical Society. The property at Villa Miramonte was home to the Hyrum Morgan Hill House Museum um. As well as many other uh historical um pieces um at the site. Um, the city actually funded much of what uh much of what Villa Miramonte is um previously through our redevelopment. Agency, but also um is basically second in line to own Villa Miramonte after the historical society. Should the historical society not be present or disappear, that property becomes property of the city. Um, so in two thousand seventeen, as we updated our bikeways, trails, parks and recreation master plan. We really looked at what uh Villa Miramonte would be as part of the city's um park and historical resources inventory. In that plan, we really looked at Villa Miramonte as although it's owned by the historical society. Being part of the city's um park system and really our only historical park. So um through that planning, um it was looked at um the opportunity to expand um Villa Miramonte. And the amenities at the site, as um I'm sure mostly the council is aware, um a greater portion of the site is undeveloped. And uh behind the Hyrum Morgan Hill House and um for many years, there's been plans to develop that. So the city worked um uh a few years ago with the historical society to really look at. Should this be built out as an event venue, historical resource, combination of the both to give us some guidelines of where we're going. Now, though recently, we um do a request for proposals to find um an architectural firm that would be doing a couple of things for us. One would be updating and developing a conceptual master plan for the site, that's what you're gonna see tonight. After um we get approval from the council, concurrence from the historical society. Next step would be to look at a first phase of that master plan, so what you're gonna see tonight from um Jason Architecture. It is the whole concept, but the next phase would be a smaller portion of that project. Cause we are, we have limited funds within our C I P to support the development of this. So that's kind of what we're um doing tonight and obviously that first phase. Any sort of bidding would come back to the council before that happened. With that, I'd uh like to invite Abe Jason up who's gonna give you um a walk through of the designs. That's gonna work.
If it's not, that's okay. Thank you, Chris, and uh thank you to city staff uh for uh sort of working with us up to this point. Uh, mayor, council members, we are really thrilled to be here tonight to present to you our progress. On the Villa Miramonte conceptual design and master plan. Um, we've been working with the community now for several months and have developed uh an approach to the site. We're excited to share some details with you. Uh, briefly, my name is Abe Jason, I'm principal of Jason Architecture. And we are a firm uh that really focuses on community and public buildings, community centers, libraries, civic spaces. So a project like this is uh really something that is close to the heart of what we do as a team. Uh, I'm joined by J J Nicholas, who is the private manager for Jason Architecture, as well as Johnny Jneki, she's the landscape architect. Lead with uh Johnny uh J L J A uh landscape architects. So we have a couple of components to the presentation tonight, the first is uh site concepts. And really, we'll wanna speak to the site concepts, I'm largely gonna be speaking to uh the process that we've undertaken to gather information and listen to the community. Um, so I'm gonna be brief uh when I speak to those concepts, because we're gonna cover them in more detail later in the presentation when we speak to landscape. The building and the budget. Alright, so we started with two concepts that we uh gathered feedback on. Um, again, I'm not gonna speak to the detailed components of this, uh later in the presentation. Uh, Johnny will speak to the site in much more detail and we'll speak to the proposed building in much more detail. But generally speaking, um you can see on the site, we have the Morgan Hill House and the museum indicated in white. And the back half of the site is what is really part of the master plan and being developed. Um, that briefly, there's a couple just key uh programmatic components on the site. We have a uh sort of orchard-like garden space and indigenous and contemplative garden. An outdoor gathering space and then we have parking for about thirty five uh spaces. We also have two new buildings on the site. The primary building is a large sort of multipurpose building intended to support events, classes, et cetera. And then we have a smaller building, which is really a uh small storage uh space uh sort of located. Adjacent to the existing Morgan Hill, I'm scared, museum. The first concept here that you see uh places the new primary building in uh symmetry, symmetrical alignment with the Morgan Hill House. It also places parking on the north side of the site with centrally located accessible parking. The second concept has all the same programmatic components. In this case, the building is located on the north side of the site, no longer aligned with the Morgan Hill House. And the parking is located at the back of the site. Accessible parking is located along the drive aisle as you enter the site. We reviewed these two concept options with uh several stakeholders. Uh, we actually had a round of stakeholder group uh discussions and those really occurred uh in the fall and early winter. We then uh presented these concepts to the Library Culture and Arts Commission, the park and the Parks and Recreation Commission. And lastly, we we held a community meeting on the concepts in April. There are a couple of key themes that emerged, so one of the things we did here was that uh we we have a railroad uh running through the site. The use of the railroad is obviously changed over the years and it's going to continue to change and I was concerned about acoustic separation from that railroad. Um, another point that came up again and again was accessibility to all buildings, it was really important that um it was easy to access the site. Um, sort of mobility was uh simple, um and there was a centrally located um accessible parking zone. Work art uh came up again and again as well, it's really important that this site is enlivened through uh both narrative, uh sculptural art. Art within the landscape, we don't know what form that will take, but it's something that uh has this project would develop. We wanna think about how to thoughtfully integrate, um you know, particularly with potentially local artists from the community. Parking for events and uh the emphasis is inadequate here, um this is, the intent would not be in this master plan to. Uh, support the largest events happening here, there's shared parking agreements for the site and we don't want it to be a sea of asphalt. So the thought was about thirty spaces would accommodate a majority of the events that in programming that was envisioned on the site. And for uh events that were larger, um they would utilize uh shared parking agreements. Uh, expanded community access, so uh you know, a thought to how to bring more community to the site, how to activate it. How to make it feel like it's really a a place for people to go um and uh sort of becomes uh sort of. A space for a broadened set uh set of programming activities. Educational spaces throughout, um it is really part of the mission of Villa Miramonte, uh it's about historical education. So this is uh at its heart an educational site. And then lastly, uh aesthetically beautiful cohesive site, so uh what I'd say to that is we wanted to make sure. We stitched the new uh portion of the back of the site with the existing really beautiful and maintained front half of the site. We didn't wanna feel like they were uh alien to each other. So in going through this process and gathering information, listening to stakeholders, gathering feedback. We did determine that the site concept option A was the preferred option, there were a couple of key attributes that swayed us in that direction. Uh, importantly, uh the accessible parking is centrally located, it is uh sort of right up next to the existing Morgan Hill House. The museum and the proposed building and really the preferable location for ADA parking on the site. The alignment of the buildings was uh appreciated, the the symmetry between the Morgan Hill House. And the new uh then new structure on the site uh speak spoke to the historical aspect of the site. And then the entry sequence uh was also appreciated, the sense that you didn't have to drive all the way to the back of the site. And then walk all the way to the front of the site to experience it, that you could have, could enter the site, park in the center and then kind of move outward from there. With that, I'm gonna um bring Johnny up and she's gonna actually go into much more detail on the landscape.
Thank you.
Thank you, Abe. Good evening, I apologize, I'm a little cold, so I'm gonna hopefully make it right through here. So um um I'm gonna walk you through the the concepts in general terms. And then um talk to the site plan and how it's developed. Essentially, we're looking at creating a um outdoor series of gardens or rooms that reflect um. The history and the um tapestry of Morgan Hill, the natural environment as well as the cultural, social and historical. We really like the idea of weaving public art, as Abe said, into the design, uh weaving um. Natural plantings, boulders, materials that are really of the place that remind us of Morgan Morgan Hill. And of the region as well as um. Things like the Jasper Stone, so all of that is really important and and um inspirational to our design. Uh, here are uh the features of the contemplative garden, which um as Abe said, we're really looking to stitch everything through. So it's not a series of different experiences, altogether you feel like you're in one space. Um, we are looking at a gathering space that's accommodating to large and small groups. So that if you arrive and you come through the building, you come through the contemplative garden and you come to the back where there may be an amphitheater or gathering space. It feels welcoming whether or not there's two or three of you or twenty or thirty of you. So um things that we're looking at are either kind of the spiral form, which. Um, wow, that was interesting, the spiral form that reflects the Sentinel Garden. Um, also the indigenous garden and the entry to the Morgan Hill House. Kind of taking from the circular patterns and bringing them into the new design. We're also looking at the idea of an art wall or a wall that could also be burned up, we have a lot of soil out on the site. We wanna be able to reuse it without taking it offsite, it's an opportunity as for us to build up behind the building. And between the railroad and the site to create both a sound buffer and a visual buffer for um for the project. Creating shade and color and interest throughout the year is really important. And being able to speak to El Toro and to the history, agricultural history and future of Morgan Hill. So we see um the entry to the new building, having this opportunity for a really beautiful bosque of trees or orchard, if you will. We're talking about a non-friding orchard, everything we wanna do and Chris has pointed out, has to be maintainable. And so we wanna make sure that the selections of plants are plants that we can take care of. And so while we would love to have the spring flowers and the fall fruit, we would be talking about a non-friding orchard. Or even non-friding olive trees for more evergreen canopy throughout the summer and into the winter. The use of native trees and native plants is important to us, is our firm and the work that we've already done in Morgan Hill and downtown. And I believe to your uh sustainability principles and the experience of place. So the incorporation of native and site-adapted trees and plants is part of the plan. And woven into the fabric of the design from the California live oak to sycamore to the buckeye. And um the midrone or the arbutus marina, it's a cultivar, but it does so well here and it's just quite a beautiful tree. It gives us beautiful color uh for the bark and interest. The understory is a um kind of a mosaic, if you will, of native plants and site-adapted plants that are drought tolerant. Uh, we'll do broad swaths of planting so that it's not as if you have to go out there and deadhead and. And take care of every little plant individually, it can be one swell sweet, swell sweet, pardon me. Um, programmatically, I think Abe touched on some of this, the red indicates the idea of being able to come in off the existing drive. Drive into a shared parking space that would serve both the front and the back. And become a central kind of arrival zone for visitors. The blue shows um accessible pathways throughout the site and the blue arrows are indicating access points in and out of the buildings. Existing and new, uh the green diagrams with the light shade in the center are gathering spaces. So you come in um to the front entrance, which is number ten on your diagram there. And that would be a courtyard, come into the building, you can go out and through to the bottom of the page to number nine, that's contemplative garden. Which then takes you back to what we're thinking is the gathering space or amphitheater back towards the railroad. And then out to the front is the uh flowering orchard, the seasonal kind of gathering space. On either side of the new building are, is an opportunity for us to create a buffer, a landscape buffer, both from the rail. And then also to give some separation between the Morgan Hill House and the new building. So that there's, there's a distinct separation, but yet they are united um through their plantings. This is uh one, I'm gonna show you two plans, that this first plan is um we would say is more organic and curvilinear than the second. It um draws from the forms that we see out at the um museum in the Morgan Hill House and the Centennial Garden. By um as you come into the building, it's got a kind of a curved edge. And in the entry court, when you come through, back through the contemplative garden into the gathering space. Which is really much more of a concentric ring kind of um amphitheater space. The orchard, the flowering, non-friding orchard out in front is a bosque of trees that's much more, it's while it's laid out in a traditional grid. The understory, the gravel, the decomposed gravel is more amorphous, so it's a softer edge. And that's a place where we see a lot of opportunity for events of all different types, gathering, maybe there's movable furniture there. Uh, it's also a great place for when students arrive, they can run around and cool down before they get in the building. Second plan takes you through to the central parking lot and then this one is really speaking more towards um the idea of. A barn vernacular, a very um kind of more organized linear layout. So when you come in, there's a sequence of entrances, entry um experiences, the paving is all level, so you can walk right across the entrance. But it's in a pattern that's more linear and architectural, if you will. The bosque of trees, the orchard comes right off of it in a very traditional form. And that still has the opportunity to have a lot of gathering underneath it um in usable space at the ground level. And Abe's gonna walk us through a whole series of um imagery that that render out what. that that render out what these these outdoor spaces look and feel like. Um, on number nine, I just wanted to point out here versus the prior option, this is much more of a layered kind of amphitheater gathering space as opposed to the concentric ring. And so we're playing with both of those options and um, as you'll see, um, Abe will walk us through um, more of the views from the building and how the building sits in the landscape. Thank you.
Thank you, Joni. So, excuse me. Apologies. So in thinking about what should this building be? I think the kind of logical jumping off point is this building is secondary to the Morgan Hill House. And what's an appropriate secondary building on a site that has an agricultural history? Um, logically, it's a barn. So we look to a barn vernacular as a point of inspiration. Um, you can see several examples here and there's a a couple kind of relevant traits that uh, you know, barns that have that can carry over to kind of an architecture that's meant for humans, not for animals or livestock. Um, one, uh, there's a real simplicity of form, um, a pure gable that runs down the whole length of the building. Um, generally, the openings are smaller. Um, you don't have kind of large kind of open walls of glass and um, yeah, a really sort of modest palette of materials, uh, wood siding, metal roofs. So this really served as kind of the launching off point for inspiration about how we think about this building that we're adding to the site. We also took a look at downtown Morgan Hill. This is kind of a wonderful uh, photo from the historical archives. And sort of took a look at the patterns of buildings uh, from this uh, kind of early photo. And one of the things you can see is this consistency of the flat gabled form throughout downtown Morgan Hill. Um, it's actually represented on a majority of the buildings in this photo and it's kind of interesting that you really see that pattern repeated. That's it's a similar form to the barn-like form. And we thought a little bit about, you know, sort of examples of when you take a barn building, what does it mean to kind of use that vernacular but create a building for people? And so we looked at some examples of what that could look and feel like. Uh, you know, what's the pitch of the roof? What's what's its relationship to landscape? How do you think about materials, windows? These are all things that are relevant when you start to occupy a building. We sketched a lot. Um, we like to explore a lot of ideas before we commit to one. So you can see here uh, us playing with a bunch of different forms, all really related to the idea of a barn. And they're all subtle variations on the pitch of the slope, um, how it meets the landscape, uh, the scale of the building, the kind of length of the eaves. So we do some exploration before we jump to kind of more uh, sort of detailed renderings. The building itself is very, very simple. Um, it's a large, excuse me, it's a modest um, community building. It's about three thousand square feet. Uh, it's a multipurpose space. Uh, the primary space, as you can see, that's number nine. It's a flexible space. Uh, this would uh, you know, sort of support classes, uh, medium-sized gatherings, um, sort of workshops, events of that nature. It's supported by a small kitchenette space and a storage space where you would have, uh, you know, stacking chairs and folding tables. It's got a lobby that serves entry as an entry to the space. It's not too large or too formal. And then off that lobby, you have restrooms. And then importantly, you have a uh, office and historical archive space to support the ongoing activities of preservation and education on Villa Miramonte. So now I'm gonna walk through a series of views of what this uh, will look and feel like. So the first one is uh, sort of upon kind of entry to the site or conversely, if you're walking from the Morgan Hill House towards the new uh, uh, community building. And what you can see here is uh, the building is subtle upon its first impression. It really does uh, sort of present itself as an agricultural outbuilding. It's not trying to sort of steal the thunder of the Morgan Hill House, which is the focal point of the site. It's actually hidden in fact behind uh, kind of uh, an organic rock wall, which takes the scale down of the building even further. And we like the idea that it's a, it's a little bit mysterious too, like you don't quite know what it is. Next view, uh, sort of this would be upon approach, so it gives you a better sense of what the building feels like. Uh, we like the idea of the building being embraced by landscape around it, that kind of simple gable form running down along the edge of the building, simple white painted wood siding and a metal roof. This is now uh, kind of from the plaza, looking at the other side. And you can see here that flowering orchard that we discussed, that Joni discussed on one side of the building, whereas we have a contemplative garden with a different character on the other. That flowering orchard can bring a real pop of color. It really sets off in a lovely way against the white building as well as against the sky and the green around it. Upon approaching the building, you can see here, there's a really sort of obvious entry space. It draws you in. Um, but it's not overly grand or kind of overrun. It's a, it's a simple space and we like the idea of it being called the gathering space or something similar like that. Now looking from the contemplative garden back at the lobby. Uh, you can see on this side of the building, instead of a more formal orchard, we have kind of a series of meandering paths. Um, this would be planted with indigenous species uh, with some spot, uh, thought to the kind of indigenous history of the site and um, really sort of be a more informal way to experience the site, a spot to go for a stroll or have a seat with a small group of people. Walking around to the back of the building, you can see here we have uh, the kind of indigenous garden and contemplative garden on the left. We have the gathering space on the right and you can see the flowering orchard beyond. This view is through the flowering orchard. And uh, we love the idea of this, you know, canopy and bloom and uh, sort of the peaks of the building beyond. We have uh, one sort of tall slender window that adds a little drama to the form and actually sort of indicates that this is a civic building. Um, it's actually reminiscent of the scale that you might see of like a fireplace or something to that nature or a tall light well. And it does sort of set it apart and says that this is barn-like, but it is not a barn. We have a view here now looking back and this shows the building in context. And one of the things I'll note is that this uh, sort of really demonstrates the axial alignment, the symmetrical alignment to the gable of the Morgan Hill House. So the the peak of the roof is in direct alignment with the peak of the roof of the Morgan Hill House. This is the last image we have for use from the back of the building and you can see this is the gathering space. It's informal. It's flexible. Um, and you know, as Joni indicated, there potentially be some seating behind it, burned up soil to provide acoustic separation from the railroad. And uh, the idea that this can really take on a lot of forms for different variety of events. It's not really too narrow and specific in terms of its spatial use. It's an open space to be imagined by different groups. So lastly, I'm gonna talk about budget and then we'll open it up to discussion. So initially, we were looking at a larger building on the site. Um, you can see here what's represented in this initial diagram and that's what was presented at the very beginning of uh, this presentation. It's actually a six thousand square foot building. So we estimated this out using our professional third-party cost estimator. Construction came out at about twelve million dollars. Soft costs about thirty-five percent, which is typical for a public building of this scale and type, which brought the total to sixteen million dollars. We did have a conversation with city staff. Um, that felt like that was uh, sort of too expensive and we needed to think about ways to really bring that cost down without compromising the mission and problematic goals of the project. I'll note, these are in twenty twenty-three construction costs. They do not include escalation and that's because we don't uh, sort of know yet the schedule for implementation of this project since it's simply a master plan. So in sort of reviewing that first estimate with city staff, we thought about how could we bring the cost down without significantly impacting the program and goals of the project. Uh, the first thing and the sort of biggest thing we did was reduce the building footprint from six, uh, excuse me, from three, uh, six thousand to three thousand square feet. We also um, changed the phase one building to a single occupant restroom. And uh, we limited phase one site work uh, to a new driveway parking utilities. Um, landscape work would be completed in the final phase. So the final master plan concept here reduces the building to three thousand square feet. You can see that reduction in scale. Um, largely, all the program components remain unchanged. And that reduced construction cost to about ten million dollars. With soft costs, the project is about fourteen million dollars as estimated in twenty twenty-three dollars. And that's a cost reduction of about two point five million dollars. So with that, I'd like to open it up for discussion. We're happy to answer any questions you have. Um, Joni can come up and answer questions about landscape as well.
Very good. Great report. Thank you all. Any questions by the council? Councilmember Burjeli.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Um, I have, uh, can you explain the shared parking? What, what is that specifically? I'm not sure I understand that because uh, the way I look at it is uh, you have a limited parking space on the property. And so where would the other cars be if if the uh, event is larger than what you stated?
Yeah, um, so we estimate that, you know, a parking lot of about thirty spaces, give or take, would support an event of about sixty people. You know, if you assume some cars have one person, some have four, maybe an average of two per car. So the, so the, the kind of lot on the site would max out at an event of maybe fifty to sixty people. Um, the uh, Villa Miramonte already has an agreement in place. Um, I don't know if it's formalized, so I can't speak to the details of it, but they do shared parking arrangements with the uh, adjacent church and they do shuttles from that. So that arrangement would would remain. Um, and perhaps city staff could speak a little bit more detail or perhaps someone from Villa Miramonte. So I don't know the actual written details of that agreement, but i- in kind of essence, that's the shared parking agreement.
Okay, thank you.
I could add, councilmember, it's the church right next door that they partner with that they walk over. But in addition to that, there's uh, finished parking completely on the street as well as other areas. Um, and so any of that planning could extend beyond that too, if it was something bigger.
Thank you. Um, um, I, I, I really liked the, the design and the presentation and the flow of the gardens. But um, um, I'm a little bit concerned about the amount of water that you would use in the landscape because we're asking, um, you know, our residents to cut back on watering and I see something that's very lavish. And I know that you mentioned, you know, drought resistant and I know what they are, but those trees are, they take a lot of water to establish themselves. So could you just talk to that?
Absolutely. Um, thank you for the question. The trees will take water to get established, as you know. Um, eventually they will, we will wean them off. Um, usually it's a three to five year period where we're doing fairly regular watering with bubblers, flood bubblers, very specific to the trees, deep watering, infrequently but deeply watering them so that they can start to push out their roots and find their own sources of water. Then as far as the plants go, actually spent a good part of today walking around looking at um, what's really doing well with the minimum amount of water and maintenance. And so a lot of our plants, like the deer grass, once they're established, they do look lush, but they don't really take a lot of supplemental water based on the annual precipitation we get. And they're actually starting to get used to having a more arid envi- environment. While the um, renderings are quite lush, realistically, we know that they will go through a period where they'll be in full flower and then they'll be quiet and they won't be as lush. So as far as managing water, we will stay under the allowable annual allotment of water statewide and then our goal is always to reduce that even further so that you're really um, staying in line with how much water we receive a year. And then thinking about potentially warmer weather down the road and being able to have plantings and landscapes that can do as much as they can on their own. Hope I've answered some of your questions.
You answered all of them. Thank you. Um, did you ever uh, think about adding any solar aspect to the rendering?
The solar aspect? Yeah, you wanna?
So um, we did talk about it as a team. Um, the building is actually well-suited to add solar. The standing seam metal roof is a perfect roof to add solar. It's got a great orientation for it. It's actually kind of a really wonderful size for solar. Um, we've worked on uh, several zero net energy buildings and this is the type of building that actually is very well-suited to uh, a zero net energy building with a solar array. That being said, it is not included in the cost estimate. Um, that is absolutely something we'd be open to discussing with city staff. As always, there are budgetary implications, but from a design standpoint, the building is very, very well-suited to uh, accept solar either as part of the initial construction or as a future phase.
Thank you. May I have no more questions?
Very good. Councilmember Lebers and then we'll go to councilmember Spring and then.
Thank you for the great uh, presentation. I have a couple of landscaping questions first. I, I had, um, I really like, actually all of them. It is gonna be hard to choose. But on the north side where the parking is, it butts up to a um, low-income area. Are you considering any kind of fencing or landscaping that would separate those homes from the traffic that would be generated from coming in here?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a good question. Uh, one of the things that I didn't speak to is that we will be incorporating all the stormwater, all the runoff into bioswales and infiltration basins. And that area, to some extent, part of it can serve, it is on the higher side of the site. So there's a portion of it that we can direct some water to. And so we can get some lusher fuller plants there and get them going and then we'll do um, plant screening.
Plant screen?
You know, as far as shrubs.
Oh, okay, but no actual fence?
We actually haven't talked about a fence, so that's something we could look at.
Yeah, I think that's something that we should look at. Okay. And then also same thing uh, as far as landscaping along the railroad tracks. I know, um, plants can be a great buffer for noise. So I think that would be an area you don't want to really skimp on. Yeah. And again, if we're having this as an event center, again, there might need to be some kind of fencing. So just, you know, a kid doesn't run over on the railroad tracks or something, you know, so um, I guess that's a question. The agriculture, I mean, the landscaping is you and then for staff, are we considering any kind of fencing?
There's existing fencing now, so and there would be. Uh, it's chain link. So the question would be, what does it look like at the end? What type of fencing?
Okay, alright.
So I, I can address the planting part. So really, we're thinking of using that soil that's out there to create a berm so we have even more protection and then we can raise the planting up so that we, we don't see the fence.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I now have questions, I guess probably for staff or uh, for the architect himself. Is the driveway into the parking lot going to be paved or will it remain gravel as it is now?
It's maybe paved and it's one of the priorities that the Historical Society has where I believe the first phase is to get that paved. Um, that's one of the first priorities.
Okay, good. And I have had um, communication with the public uh, through emails about concerns of going from the new building to the old house with classrooms and stuff of kids, children running across that driveway. It's, it's not a big driveway, but it's still something. How, how are we going to make that a little bit safer for children? Is that a landscaping question?
I, I can speak to that and that absolutely did come up in um, our stakeholder and community outreach. And so we did have uh, sort of a thoughtful, robust discussion about uh, kind of how you access the site. There were sort of pros and cons to kind of that aspect for both with the ADA parking up in the front. The other option, there was the danger of backing out into into the drive aisle, which felt um, sort of untenable. Um, the way we see it, obviously the, the speed limit will be very low on the site. That, that curve is uh, sort of such that people will slow down coming around that curve. And then we would want to work with city staff and, and sort of what is appropriate under town guidelines, but look at tactile warning strips, um, sort of changing the paving pattern and then pedestrian lights as well. Um, so we do a series of measures that, you know, sort of provide indication um, to slow down in advance of coming around that curve and then also visual and tactile warnings so that it's really, really clear that that pedestrian, pedestrian zone needs to be observed by automobiles. So I think it's a relevant concern and appropriate to bring up. Um, and I think we, we have strategies to address it and that would come as we develop the project further.
Right. And, and whatever is decided, we probably all agree that something needs to happen, you know, like a speed bump or the lights or whatever. Is that included in the bid or?
Yes, we do, we do have um, uh, sort of elevated paving that would be tactile already in the bid um, and warning and, and sort of the, the sort of the basic components of that are included in the estimate. Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmember Spring.
Uh, thank, thank you for, for the nice presentation and you know, it's like talking about art. Uh, it's always different views, right? Don't think. Uh, why did concept B not, not make the cut? Cause I personally like that concept.
So, um, So obviously, we have to kind of evaluate a sort of a multitude of inputs and and feedback that we hear. And you are not alone. There are other people who like Concept B as well. In aggregate, when we reviewed the feedback we received, we there was a clear preference for Concept A. I wouldn't say it was overwhelming. It wasn't like it was, you know, ninety percent, ten percent. But in reviewing the the feedback we received and kind of in our own professional opinion, we saw the merits in Concept A being the one to proceed with. So I do think the kind of key points, as I kind of highlighted at the beginning of the presentation, the location of ADA parking seemed most appropriate. There was some concern about the parking off the drive aisle in Concept B and cars backing into the drive aisle. And then, while it wasn't unanimous, generally, there was an appreciation for the alignment, the symmetrical alignment of the new building with the Morgan Hill House. So those were a couple of the key bits of feedback that led us to move forward with Option A.
Councilmember, if I can just add, both commissions were in favor of the selected concept as well. And then just on the ADA parking, it's much more than just the ADA parking and the location. It's the volunteers that are working and the drop off of deliveries, stuff they're delivering to both the museum and the house and getting that, being able to get close to that because we have a limited number of volunteers and it's a lot of work. So that that was a big component, too, not just being able to park close, but being able to do all those things. Especially whether it was drop off of kids, drop off of materials, those sort of things all came into it as well.
Right, I understand that the do you do you agree that one could argue that well, well, separating the two buildings, especially if you have a busy event, might not be a perfect solution?
Well, I don't think there's ever going to be a perfect solution on on a site that we have, or we're limited on space. One of the things, depending on the size of the event, is parking may be closed and may be used for the event itself because as and that's what the Historical Society has talked about as well. So I don't know that there's a a perfect solution either way.
Yeah, I I know we could argue, you know, night volume, not going to do that. But so high-speed rail, we haven't talked about that a long time, but this this property would be right in the pathway of high-speed rail. Well, how does, where would, how does, how would that impact any of those two concepts? If it ever were to happen?
Yeah, so the the high-speed rail is right on the our well road existing alignment right there. So it does not impact the property itself. Obviously, high-speed rail trains going next to the property would be impactful.
Well, it would cause noise and yeah, it would have an impact, wouldn't it?
Yeah, absolutely. So there's there's a couple of different things on the noise impact, which we've talked about. And I'm sure Dawn or Edith or anyone could come down and talk about this. They will, excuse me. Sound walls to deflect horn noise, but no, there's not going to be a sound wall right next to where this fence is. So you're going to hear the the trains go by when they come by. You hear the trains go by now. I'm not sure that the high-speed rail is going to be, is it charged by any louder than the freight trains? However, the frequency is probably the thing that's going to be the big part, right? So it it's going to be an impact. It could be a decision to try and build some sound and visual barrier, but there's some implications to that. I don't know if architects want to speak to that.
Right, and and do you add on question before before you speak? If I may, it's just, you know, I I think it's not just the speed. I think you would also feel some trembling and 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 the windows would shake. I can imagine everything happening there.
I can let Abe address that part as far as the architectural experience. But from the landscape, we know from an acoustical point and even a vibration point that earthen mounds do a lot to dampen the sound. And if we get a mound that comes up to four feet, that gets most of the track noise, the first, the the lower level. And then when we're able to come up, we'll have, we could do our art wall. Maybe we extend that a little further if we don't have a sound wall. And we incorporate the soil, the planting and the art wall to create our barrier and sound absorption and as well as vibration between the rail and then the building and the parking lot and outdoor spaces.
Thank you. And did I hear you say earlier that you're considering olive trees? And the reason I'm asking is this, this is an invasive a tree in California, according to California Plant Council. And I keep fighting that battle here, especially when you talk about the European olive tree. That's the one we see all over downtown. So I I don't want to see that as a as an invasive species on, when we talk about native plants.
I appreciate that. The the cultivar is a sterile cultivar, so it doesn't actually seed. With that said, they on occasion revert. And so that's that's something that we can take into real consideration as we go forward. And maybe that helps us make the decision on going towards a non-flowering, I mean, a non-fruing flowering tree.
And and I I like that you you want to incorporate the the history. Now, the history, Morgan Hill starts well before Iron Morgan Hill, right? So have you had discussions with certain stakeholder groups, indigenous tribal groups in the area of what they'd like to see?
We have not gone into detail with the local tribal people yet. I know that the the museum has. And so that's part of what we're we're we'll build upon. And then as we move forward, we'll want to bring more stakeholders in. And for us, it's it's really important to speak to the history of the place as well as the future, so and we're all part of it.
Yeah, it's just, it's important that we know where does the history start, right? Of of this area. The the other question I I have is, I don't, maybe one for you, but but don't go too far, please. Unless unless we win in the lottery, how are we going to pay for it?
Yeah, this is a, so so I I appreciate, we appreciate the question. We have two point five million dollars budget in the CIP. This is a fourteen million dollar project. We're going to be doing a very small portion. Obviously, the Historical Society has some priorities, paved driveway, some other things. So we would be developing a first phase. Alternate phases could be something the city looks to fund in the future, the Historical Society looks to fund in the future, one more looks to fund in the future, or we work together with all those sort of things to fund in the future. But you you're absolutely right. We're not building the whole thing. And to be to be straight up, the the building that's proposed is not going to be in the first phase because it's well above our budget.
So so, yeah, because we always look at those great concepts. They're so beautiful, right? And then and then reality kicks in, and what do we get, the paved driveway and the parking?
Well, maybe a little more than that, but that would be what we come back to you with after we develop the first phase. So hopefully, a little bit more than that. And we have to dream, right? Just like some of the other projects, we dream and we figure out how to make it happen.
Well, I'd like to have a lot of choice, too, but I only can afford a Ford, right? So so but I I looked at my Ford fit into my garage. So, you know, when I look at the concept, look at it, is is does, if we have to do it in bits and pieces, what makes sense, right? And that's not clear to me right now because I don't know what we can afford. Out of those.
We can definitely, we can definitely afford a driveway. We can definitely afford some improved landscaping. We can definitely afford part of a parking lot. We may be able to afford a restroom building.
I gotta be real quickly, we're we're really not talking about budget tonight.
Correct. But it's related, right?
It is to some degree, however, what we're looking at is the conceptual sites plan.
That's why I asked that question, right? If 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 I'm asked for an opinion on the design, that will never happen. Then my answer is different than if I look at designing faces, right?
It's it's correct.
It's important.
Well, it's important, and we can come back to it, Mayor. Yes, but I I do have, I do want to make sure that if we're getting off track, we get us back on track. Actually, we want to make sure that we're we're not going to be talking budget tonight.
Yeah, we'll we'll come back. To councilmember Spring, your question, the design that that Jason Architecture and Johnny Janeky, they're talking about, it's important because even if it's a small portion, it's starting to feed what we build out. Because there may be opportunities for us to do a a small first phase. And then Historical Society may be to do other pieces of it with that planting palette and those things as we go along in smaller phases.
And just to add to that, I mean, we may set ourselves up such that we're ready for a grant. And so the the more ready we are, the more likely that we would be able to obtain a grant.
Yeah, so you know, if we dream big and and then only have small dreams that we that we can make a reality, right? Then it's important that those small pieces make sense and are usable, and there's a benefit to that, right? And 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 that adds to the concept. That's why I'm asking about that. So so and I think that's a fair question, isn't it? Yeah, yeah, thank you. The you also talked about art, and so again, this is a farming community as well. Instead of, you know, just traditional artwork, have you have you have any discussion of incorporating pieces from farms, right, that that are no longer used, right? That now one could show, you know, an old wagon or some of the tools they used in the past many don't even know anymore what they are.
We could, we could absolutely go into that. At the conceptual level, we're we're putting the idea out there that we want to weave the local heritage in and and as well as public art and even work with local artists. I mean, one of our projects was using, we're using the the sow seeds for the downtown outdoor seeding. So we do, I mean, we we just love it. So I think as we develop the project, we'll be able to get more specific. And so hearing your input tonight is really important because you're one of the stakeholders.
Thank you. And speaking of stakeholders and groups, you reached out to, did you get any any inputs that made you change certain aspects of your designs or concepts? Or did they just all say, let's do it the way you proposed?
You know, that's a, that's a great question. We went through different design options. And we did end up going with something that was generally more curvilinear, softer and spoke to what's already out there, more than being very distinct and different. And so weaving them together was something that came out of our conversations and not having every garden be just unique and completely different, but that there's a thread and a connection, be it the plant type or the materials that you're walking on, tied back to the existing fabric of the landscape. So that was a change, and I think it strengthened the design a lot.
And I think there was a robust debate at at both commissions and within the Historical Society and at the community meeting on the designs that that helped lead to where we are. Like, every meeting had good debate. And I think that we do have representatives of the Historical Society here that could provide insight as well.
Yep, I see. I'm all sitting back there to hear. No, no, thank you. Appreciate. That's very nice work done, yeah.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Martinez-Beltran.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your report. It's beautiful, and you're quite talented in what you do. And by no means an architect, but I really appreciated everything. I'm going to back up, and I'll definitely comment on all that you've presented. But I, too, think that we are ahead of ourselves. And I've gone back and looked at the management partners.
I want to make sure, this is questions, though, just some questions.
I I'd like to understand what what is really the plan? They say here in their study, we believe any improvements to landscaping and parking at Villarreal Monte should be undertaken only after a specific plan for the site has been completed that has identified the type of uses and events that are likely to occur at the site. These improvements would go hand in hand with the planning of future auxiliary improvements, such as an outdoor pavilion space, restroom, storage and meeting facilities. So before any of that were to happen, we would need to have an idea of specifically where we're headed. Who is this targeted to? What space, what will the space be used for? This is more of staff, sorry. When you answer those questions, how how will we market this?
Absolutely. So this goes a lot into what the Historical Society is doing. So what Historical Society since that study has come out, and I I'm sure they'd be able to speak to this better than I can, has developed a strategic plan that they update annually and they work on. And it's really fed into what the key needs of this facility are. So that building is a multipurpose room. It's not an event center. It's a multipurpose room that can be, multipurpose space that can be used for their collection, for volunteers to come and sort their collection. It can then transition to a space that can have smaller community gatherings on the inside. It can be used for meetings. It can be used as a secondary place for the the Hyrum House. And I I'm sure Roger and Kathy and Paul can explain it much better than me. But that is really the focus because that's what's going to meet what their strategy and what they've identified as the priorities. Restrooms are critical, will be a critical component. That's another component. Just having a entryway that in the winter isn't muddy to allow people in is another another critical component. And then, so I think they can speak to that, too, and if you let them. But there is a plan. They have a strategic plan that they've developed that they they updated and talk about annually. And I'm sure they'd be willing to show that.
I mean, and I think that's something that we need to do first before we're approving anything for over ten million dollars in theory. And I realize that getting there, you know, we're only looking at the first phase, but we're still looking at two and a half million dollars, and we haven't even looked at a strategic plan. And so that's worrisome, as my counterpart is saying. I love the the Miramonte, and I would be happy to invest that. But I think we need to understand what we're investing it for specifically, what group it's going to service, you know, how we're gonna, who's going to staff it, what the hours are going to be, all of that before we're moving into all of this. And I mean, I've said this before, you know, and I guess I'm just concerned because I don't feel like, well, I know, it's not that I don't feel, we we haven't, we haven't got there. And so if we could get that, then I think we we could plan out, you know, maybe what makes sense in a series of chains that we could do in a in a reasonable way. Maybe we get grants, however we do that. I mean, I've read through this study, and it's quite alarming and and concerning to look at. And, you know, multiple times, they've said in here that before any investment were to be made in the property, that there should be a very clear strategic plan of who is going to be serviced by this. They say in here that they weren't really sure, you know, what group is being serviced to. And so I'm not really sure how we could move forward with that.
Again, I want to keep you to questions if you can come back for comments.
Do we have a strategic plan? Maybe we can table this, look at that. Do you have that?
I believe that Historical Society has a strategy that they've developed that has gone into this. And I think this is a, I I mean, it's going to evolve over time, over time. When we rely on a volunteer organization to operate this for us, if the city was operating it, it would be different. But they they have the strategy that they've developed and direct response to the plan that you've put together. We can check, we can definitely, you know, share that vision with the council. But I don't know that it needs to necessarily stop us from moving forward, but that can be something that the council discusses.
I think I think we absolutely need to have a look at that before we would approve a project like that. And I also think that the community should have some say in that and some decision as to where do they, where do they see Villarreal Monte going? What would bring them to the site? What activities and programming are they looking to have? What would be better, an outdoor classroom or, you know, maybe a smaller place where whether it's more historical? I think those are, that's critical information that where we put a price tag of over ten million dollars that we should have. Okay. I want to go and and talk to you. You've put so much work into this. I, you know, I'm looking at this, and I, again, looking at the reports and kind of where we're going here. I know there's so much potential at Villarreal Monte. It's a beautiful site. And how do we make it become successful like some of the others? And I've read in here about Hakoni Gardens. Have you thought about focusing on an area of of, for example, it's a Japanese garden, right? So everything there is gained. If you've been there, it's beautiful. It's all around the Japanese idea. And I think we have an opportunity to do something like that here, you know. Morgan Morgan Hill is not just this this small piece of of, you know, Diana Murphy, and that's a great piece to have. And that house, I think, is a very beautiful gem to keep. We've also have the Amamutsen who are here in this area. And I think something like, have you looked at engulfing, you know, embracing that? And maybe this is somewhere where they do moon ceremonies and they And maybe this is somewhere where they do moon ceremonies and they do.
Council member, I need to bring that to a question. Your time is up.
Have you, have you even looked at this? This, this seems like little too homogeneous for our strategic priorities that we have for the council.
Thank you for the question. Um, yes, we have. And, um, we do have the indigenous garden that is, is developed on site. And, uh, the idea is that we draw the plants and the, um, the plants that are medicinal and that are traditionally used for basket weaving and things like that through the garden. Uh, with the root of the garden, part of the garden being in.
I'm particularly interested more of the built environment rather than the garden.
Okay. I want, I want you to finish your answer and we're going to move on.
Okay. So I was just going to say, so that that's woven into the plant palette, but the spaces themselves are also flexible so that they can be used for, say, spiritual, uh, experiences, traditional experiences, different types. It's a very, I mean, the goal is to create a series of outdoor spaces that can be programmed in different ways for different groups and not have them so specific that, uh, you may not be able to use them should a particular group want to do something there so that it's, it's welcoming.
Thank you, Johnny. I have a couple of questions too. I'm assuming, and this could be for staff or even for the volunteers at the, uh, historical society, that this down the road dreaming big, it gets built, uh, that these, uh, this community space would be for lease. I could use it for fundraising purposes. Am I assuming that would be consent progress? And so any group, not just a group, but any group would have access to lease that space.
Yeah. And they, they do that now with, uh, Hyrum Morgan Hill Room is available for, for rent. It's Hyrum, Hyrum Morgan Hill House, sorry, is available for rent as well.
Okay. And so there is no, it's no limitation. It's any group within the community who's interested, wants to have a function and can afford whatever prices are set. Is that correct?
I believe that's corrected, but the historical society, I mean, the, the one thing there different than say our community and cultural center, the protection of the historical resources is a little bit higher standard than you would see at a normal place.
Makes sense. I mean, yeah, we're not going to have a, a, you know, a birthday party in there. I get that. Um, so at this point, what we're looking for again is the, uh, approval of the site plan. We're not committing any city funds to this at all. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'm done with questions. We're going to open it, uh, when open to public comments. Any comments?
We have several. I'll start with Nick Geish.
Evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff and community. My name is Nick Geish. I'm speaking tonight in my role as CEO and President of the Borg Hill Chamber of Commerce. I would like to start by comments tonight by first recognizing the tremendous value that the Morgan Hills Historical Society provides to our community. Last question, Morgan Hills Historical Society is the single nonprofit organization that serves our community as the principal source of truth, all things past, present, which in turn gives us a glimpse of how our future will be documented over time. In my humble opinion, one, one may measure the true essence of a nonprofit organization by the contributions they make advancing the health and welfare of our community and individuals they touch. It is quite clear that all that reside in Morgan Hill. Morgan Hill Historical Society is a foundational cornerstone of community support, enriching the lives of all that visit this wonderful campus of discovery, education and historical preservation. The Chamber of Commerce is in complete alignment and support of the two principal aims of this proposal being discussed tonight. The first one being continued development of the campus to protect and to preserve our historical resources. A second principal aim is that proposed development expansion will be designed in such a manner that supports a high level of cost efficiency and recurring maintenance and operations. I can also note that the intention of the proposal in front of you tonight is purposely designed in a forward-looking lens. It's scalable and adaptable to future opportunities and has discussed constraints, which as phased in will serve as a foundational grounding pad for future granting, grant, uh, funding. Excuse me, which as phased in will serve as a foundational grounding pad for future grant funding and philanthropic opportunities that simply are not achievable at the growth and the extended depth of programs and services they offer. For these reasons, we recommend and encourage the council to approve the Villa Miramonte Conceptual Site Master Plan Design. And thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. Next we have Roger Knopf.
Evening. I'm Roger Knopf, President and General Manager of the Morgan Hill Historical Society. Now, with that stated, let me say a couple of things. Wow, Nick, you kind of summarized this whole thing very nicely. Thank you. This initially you talked about the society and, you know, who we are and the relationship to the city. And the fact that we, the society are through, um, a long-term relationship with the city, uh, memorialized through MOUs, basically indentured servants to the community of Morgan Hill. Today, the society is the steward of Villa Miramonte. A two and a half acre site that hosts, that houses Morgan Hill House that that one time was thousands of acres and then over a period of time got smaller and smaller. And by the time the city got involved with that site in the late eighties, it was five acres and a dilapidated old house. Nonetheless, that dilapidated old house was a home, was a summer home, retreat home of our city's namesake, Hyrum Morgan Hill and his wife Diana Murphy. You know, passage of time, the site shrinks to five acres, that house. And in the late eighties, Lion's Eye Foundation inherited that site. And their proposal was to, to raise the building, put in a commercial building that would yield them funds to support their mission, which was to bring eyesight to all of us, a very noble mission. However, raising of that building didn't really fit with the thinking of a lot of longstanding residents here, many of them members of the historical society that had been formed a few years before. So before I run out of time here, I just want to reinforce the society came forward, and I may ask you, Mr. Mayor, for a moment or two. The historical got, society got involved when the city basically negotiated taking possession of that building, renovating it. And then in 1990, found themselves unable to do that because of the recession. So society stepped in with funds from the RDA and contractually bound through an MOU. I support the project. I wanted to find that, that we are here today managing that site on behalf of this entire community. And if we fail or go away, it does become the primary responsibility of the city through reversionary rights. So today, we collect.
I'm going to cut you off right there, but appreciate that. We know you support the project and appreciate your comments. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Thank you. Um, Kathy Sullivan.
Kathy, don't make me get tough with you.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, council members, city staff and the community. My name is Kathy Sullivan. My husband Brian and I moved to Morgan Hill in 2000. The community was new to us. We didn't know anything about it. We thought Morgan Hill was the hill in town. We became historical society members in 2004. As I, as a result of me being an AAUW member, volunteering, uh, as a docent at Villa Miramonte. Once a month, Brian and I would go there and greet visitors, move them a tour to, to share history with them, but we also learned history as we were doing that. I was a society board member from 2010 to 2022. Served as president from 2014 to 2020, retiring primarily because of health issues. I will continue to be engaged, fashion for our history and the society is embedded in my DNA. Since I became aware of the history of Villa Miramonte, I believed it important to complete the undeveloped portion of the site. It does not reflect the picturesque beauty of the front and the potential to expand the site and much better serve the community in sharing our local history. So much so that in 2015, while I was board president, the society invested considerable time and funds drafting a design that went through the city and was approved and to be reevaluated. And we're now back for another, um, iteration of that. New design presented to you tonight addresses the city's issues and provides for more inviting spaces to engage and reflect in local history exhibits, exhibits throughout the site. So we don't have time to conceptualize what's going to go on these sites. We're not at that depth of level right now, but we have so many things that we could show with the community. So little space to do it in, but this is the opportunity to plan. And without a goal, without having this plan approved, we have no goal to go out and start sharing our goals and our objectives with the community. Not familiar with what we do, I suggest you come and get more involved in what we do. So with that, our design, I said that already, um, I'm sorry. Um, I think these other spaces too allow us to be much more inclusive in the history that we provide about our community. Yes, Villa Miramonte is the home of the hills established at that era. But we have and we do tell history prior to that, and then we are planning for the future. So I support this and I hope to see this, something get started before, um, while I'm still around, I guess is what I want to say. I'd like to see the dream, um, at least begin. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kathy.
And Sullivan?
Good evening again. Uh, I've spent hundreds of days at the Morgan Hill House, sitting on that lovely porch, uh, sometimes with a beer in my hand, watching the traffic go by and greeting people as they came in and giving them tours. It's a wonderful place. As Kathy said, there was an original plan about 10 years ago to build that facility out. Never got fully developed. At that time though, the cost estimate was $5 million. Think about that. 10 years ago, $5 million, today 12. We wait any longer, it's going to be 20, it'll be 30. We need to move forward and get that facility built out so it can really help the community really expand into more type of activities at their, that event center, that, well, we'll call it an event center. It's really not going to be kind of an event center per se. But it, it'll allow the community and the people that come into our city to have functions, their weddings, all other type of events. In a couple of weeks, we're going to have a thing there that's called, uh, what are we calling it? Rotary? The runking, uh, yeah, God knows. And we've had that for a number of years there. There's other events that are always held there. So I think we need to move forward as quickly as possible. And when we talk about raising money, remember this is not only on the historical society for California, it's also on the federal historic society. And we can go after federal funds, which has been done before to help in this fundraising for the event center that we're going to be putting together here. So it's never a perfect option, believe me. You, as the longer we wait, we could always revise it, revise it, revise it. We have to put the, put that stake in the ground and move forward as quickly as possible because otherwise costs are just going to be increasing. We'll never get it done. So thank you. Well, I, I have one other thing to say that in my prior conversation with you this, this evening about the ribbon cutting. I forgot to mention the mayor, Pro Tem, uh, Mr. Spring, that was also at the event. And I want to thank him also for being there last Saturday. Thank you, Renee.
Thank you, Brian.
We have Peter Anderson.
Good evening, council members. Um, Peter Anderson, um, retired, mostly retired engineering geologist. Um, and I have to say that within my 35 years living here in Morgan Hill, I've had the opportunity to serve only twice on the Board of Directors of this, of the Historical Society. The first time was shortly after the society was given ownership of the property on the condition that we put it together and saved the building from falling down. It was technically, it was red tagged and nobody could enter. We needed to stabilize the building to make it accessible. By little did I realize I had been invited to join the Board of Directors back then, uh, because they were sort of anticipating I would donate my geotechnical skills and services, which indeed happened. Uh, the building was stabilized and in 1998 was open to the public. Everybody to use, not just for the society to have its own functions. Uh, we opened the building to anybody who wanted to use it. And that indeed, it's sort of had been our driving force ever since. Um, and I have to say, speaking to the product that you've seen from, uh, architects, um, I'd like to speak to the process by which you've seen the, the plan and all of the elements in there. Um, I can tell you that our board currently is very strong. A lot of diversity and, uh, strong-willed people. And we did not come to consensus on very many things without people that we, that wouldn't necessarily happen. We, it was a strong sense of iterative work between us and the architects. You don't have any idea of the wrinkles that we had to go through. You saw the end product. It was more than just plan A and plan B. There was a lot of discussion in through there and the hours that were put into it by a board, 15 members strong, were considered by the architects and it was iterative back and forth. And I hate to say that, I'm, I'm pleased to say that the end product, um, is the best we could do with a good 15-member board and the professionals. And they were very professional in, in doing their, their service. I think that's my input. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
We have no more speakers.
Yeah, we will close the public comment and bring it back to the council for council discussion. Anyone have any comments or conversation they want to start with? Council member, Ivan Martinez Beltran.
Thank you. Um, I have some more questions, Chris. Uh, what is the indirect fiscal impact of approving this term?
I, I don't, I don't know if I follow the question.
It says in the staff report, there's no direct fiscal impact, but it also says that it's being called for as part of the CIP. Can you please?
Yeah, so thank you. Thank you for clarifying. So I think we're developing a conceptual plan. The next phase, um, of the work is to identify a first phase to come back to the council and say, this is what we can do for our project. So it's guiding our path, but it's not approving this, there's no, no work, no works to happen. There, there's no physical work to happen on the site. There's no, as the mayor put it, no spending dollars. It's just helping us move the process forward.
Okay. And what would you respond to in the study that says property additional landscaping and improved parking? We do not believe these improvements would significantly expand the use of the property as an event destination.
So, correct. So just putting in landscaping and parking is not going to make it more of an event destination.
These improvements may result in additional capital costs, ongoing operational requirements and reduced footprint from the originally envisioned in the revised plan. I really want to get behind this, but this. I really want to get behind this, but this, I, I can't do that as a response, you know, responsible looking at this and what it's saying to me, which is why, um, I'm all for dreaming. I think that's great, and I think we should have somewhere we're going, but we need to have a strategic plan that we could look at. Perhaps the Historical Society could put something together, bring that to the council. And, you know, we could even approve that as long as there's some type of, this should be open to the community. For $10 million, we should be talking with the community about this.
I think it's important to highlight what's, what the decision point is tonight.
Right.
Because, because the council already made the decision to create this plan um, and spent $900,000 to create it. And so the decision now is really, is, is this the plan you want or is it not the plan you want? That's really the council's decision point correct tonight. It's not whether or not to have a plan.
That's why I'm saying it's completely appropriate now that we have a conversation with the community that we're hoping to get to the Historical Society and see what they want. We can still do this.
Keep in mind, uh, there have been community meetings, there have been meeting with various groups and organizations. So that, that community discussion has in fact occurred. Input has been provided, conversation has happened.
I'm talking about the city having a town hall where we discuss this project. That's the kind of community input that I'm talking about.
Don't typically do that for these types. I mean, that's just not what we do. We don't, various projects have to.
Mayor, I'm going to finish my attempt.
No, 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 keep in mind, this is council discussion. You don't get allotted time.
We had.
No, this is council discussion.
So we don't have time during discussion?
You, you have time. But you're not going to shut me down saying, I, I still have time left.
Well, if you let me have my comments.
Listen, this is about discussion. So if I'm interjecting and we're having a conversation, we can go back and forth.
I thought we had five minutes.
No, that's not how this works. This is, this is council discussion. We have fifteen total minutes for the council to talk.
Okay, okay. So I think that if we can have some commitment from the Historical Society to do a community town hall on this plan that is, has a price tag of $10 million, then we could look at something. But to come where there's been specific groups, you know, I think this needs to be everyone. This is everyone's tax dollars.
It actually is not everyone's tax dollars. There has been no $70 committed to this.
Can you commit something to the CIP, Mayor? You are committing funds. If this is something that will be folded in to the CIP, which is why I just asked our Public Works Director, we will be allocating funds to it.
The, the city council will have to approve funds to build this project. I will also just note, since I have a chance to talk, we had a community meeting, community meeting, town hall where we invited people to participate and did have participation at that meeting.
What did you hear at that meeting?
Um, we, I, I mean, we heard feedback on the designs, you know, some, you know, direct response.
Again, to clarify, should we approve this site plan tonight? There are no dollars from the city committed to this.
Only the dollars that are in the contract to finish this design work.
Correct. That's it. But nothing from a construction standpoint.
We do have money in the capital budget.
Correct. But it's, it's allocated in the CIP. A, a project would have to be approved by the council, not only from a dollar amount, but project, what that project is and the design of that project will have to be approved by the council.
And that, and that will come back to us at a later date.
Yes.
This is merely about the site plan.
Yes.
And whatever additional, whatever fee goes to pay for that site plan. We're not, we're, we're not saying there's $10 million committed to tax dollars.
I completely understand that. We do have $300,000 that we hired the architects with. We should use that wisely to try and leverage as much input as we can now before those monies have expired so that when we have that plan, we can move forward. That's, that's what I'm saying.
Understood. Councilmember Mursielli.
Yes, uh, uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, we, we have fifteen minutes total for five. That's, uh, we split three minutes apiece that we, we should take, uh, just consider it. And, uh, but, uh, we, uh, it sounds to me like we're just going around the circle here. So I'd like to call the question and make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Levers. I know that, uh, any further discussion?
Yeah. Excuse me. Well, first of all, I'll, the, the, uh, I want to thank the Historical Society and, and I have been involved. I have been a member for many years and I hope, I hope they know. So, uh, um, we, I, I want something to see happening with that site, right? And I understand what we're trying to do. Uh, there, there were two concepts here, an A and B. Question to us is, is do we like A or if not, how we would, we like to tweak it. I, I gave some feedback earlier, right? I think it's very important to, to, uh, include, uh, uh, also the, the tribals from our area, right, into the whole ideas. Uh, of course, a, a, anything that our Historical Society already is well aware of. Uh, but also I want to, and I, that's where I agree with my, my, my colleague, Yvonne. We will have to, to do something in, in pieces, right, in, in phases. Uh, and whatever we do, that has to make sense. That answer I haven't received tonight yet, what that will be, right? Will, will, will we just end up getting a restroom, the parking, what is it, right? It doesn't matter. I, I, I say jokingly, but it's important, right? And I, 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 what I'm asking is that you soon come back to us with, with, with more, uh, uh, efficient, what, how will it be used in phase one, phase two, and so on, knowing that you have the whole master plan behind. We, we all know, uh, uh, unless they, they know something, I, I don't know yet. There's no way we have the money for the 16 million or whatever it will cost, right? So, so it's like, I can approve whatever I want. I know it's never going to happen because we don't have the money. All the A is long gone, right? So, so, but for the money we have, right, if we were to spend it, what would the community get out of it, right? I think that's behind that question and that's the answer we need soon, right? So that we can start having that discussion and sell this project in the community.
You don't need the answer tonight.
I just, it's, it's of the scope. It's the next phase of the scope. And that's what I tried to explain.
Yeah. Like, finally give me another minute, please, Mayor. Indeed, I, I, I am still concerned with that road just going through there between those two buildings. I'd, I'd like, I'd like you all to take that back as a feedback to reconsider. Is that really the safest way to do things? Is, is there a way to tweak it or maybe to revamp it slightly, right, without changing the whole thing a lot? Uh, uh, and, and then of course, uh, please, none of those olive trees in there. So, th- thank you, but I look forward to that, and I hope it will happen my lifetime too, then, then. So I just want to make that very clear. And Kathy will celebrate then.
A lot of motion and a second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
That passes for you, uh, yes?
Yes.
Yeah, it passes four to one. Thank you. Uh, moving on to item sixteen, approve agreement with Hexagon. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, we're going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. Good job.
Let me stand up for a minute.
I know, exactly. Stretch. Okay, we're going to get back to, uh, the meeting here as people make their way back to the dais. All right, we're going to move on with item sixteen. Uh, this is to approve the agreement with Hexagon Transportation Consultants Incorporated for development of a transportation master plan. Take it away.
Uh, give me one. Limited staff reports up on my.
Yeah.
Uh, good, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Chris Gandy, Public Services Director here with, uh, Jennifer Carmine, Development Services Director. The report we're bringing, um, below tonight is a recommendation to authorize the city manager to execute and administer an agreement with Hexagon Transportation Consultants for the development of the city's, uh, first, uh, transportation master plan, um, for a total cost of eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. And, um, we'd also ask the council to, um, adopt a resolution amending, um, the budget to appropriate funds, um, to, to complete, uh, to fully fund this project. Um, the, the city in, uh, last year, last November, um, issued a request for proposals um, to find qualified firms to develop this transportation master plan. So this plan is, um, intended to do a lot of different things. To be really clear, this is not a traffic, not only a traffic mitigation plan, this is a transportation master plan. So it's going to look at traffic. It's going to look at traffic counts, but it's also going to include our speed survey. How do we set, set speed limits? How fast people can go? What speed limits go where? It's going to be looking at developing policies, um, um, that the council sets to achieve our transportation goals, not just for traffic, but for other things like multimodal, multimodal transportation, our Vision Zero.
Does this water there? Grab a little cup of water.
I, I need it. Always comes at the worst time.
Yeah.
Oh, but, but it's going to, it's going to, and now do analysis of our existing conditions. It's going to do analysis of what's going to happen in the future. And it's going to hopefully develop a capital improvement program that we can use to meet the goals that are established, our transportation goals that are established by this council. So this is what we're really looking to do is provide and a really comprehensive view of transportation for the city. We'll ultimately, um, send it to our general plan and the general plan's transportation circulation element. But it's going to give us the, the ability to kind of say, these are the policies that we want to see happen and, and start from there. So, um, so just want to be real clear. This is going to be not just, hey, we're hiring a consultant and they're going to draw this up and it's going to come to council once. This is going to be a long process with a stakeholders group, with multiple meetings with the council, multiple meetings with commissions, multiple meetings with the community to really draw this up with a lot of back and forth input the whole way through. So knowing this was a really big thing for the city, I put together an RFP that really laid that out there to say, these are the expectations that we're going to have. And when we did that, um, we, me, I also looked, we find as many transportation consultants as I could that we felt could do this work and directly reached out to them. There are not hundreds of firms that do this type of work. We're very limited. So, um, we did, um, we did require that proposals be turned in in February. Uh, we did only receive one proposal, as the staff report said, from Hexagon Transportation Consultants. Um, I did follow up and asked, uh, several of the firms why they wouldn't, um, was that a bid? And there were some didn't respond to me. Some, uh, provided answers. There were, um, did not have the resources, um, to do it. It was, um, someone, but to, a pure plan that they pure, uh, project on what they can do. We did get the, the proposal from Hexagon and we proceeded to do our due diligence to review the proposal. Included interviews, looking at their references, talking about the scope, refining the scope, and not just talking to Hexagon, the sub consultants. So Hexagon is proposing using multiple sub consultants to support this work. It's them as a primary, um, transportation consultant. They are, um, also proposing to use a tool design who will have a greater focus on the bike and pad components as well as, um, um, is it, is it, um, um, oh, Apex, Apex Design, who is going to help with the community outreach, development of the stakeholder groups and those sort of things. So it's a comprehensive, um, um, work that we're going to put together. So following the review of the, the proposals, um, and meeting with them, um, staffed worked to refine the scope to identify what we thought was going to be appropriate for the plan. And that's included in the scope that's in the agreement that's proposed for, um, the count, proposed for council approval tonight. We do have within there, within the proposal, we have the base components of the plan, the total seven hundred and seventy-five thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. We're proposing an optional alternative also be concluded, included in the plan that will, that would be to refine the countywide travel demand forecasting model that VTA is working on right now. So that's an optional service that we could trigger to go forward depending on how timing works with the VTA. And then we are also proposing a contingency of forty thousand dollars. And the reason we're proposing that is because we have so much outreach and so many touch points with the council that if we come back at a point and the council says, can you look into this? We'd be able to add that without amending the scope. Hexagon to use that contingency, they'd have to have authorization from staff. They can't just go through the contingency. So just wanted to clear, clear that up. So with that, we are recommend, we are recommending approval of the agreement with Hexagon Transportation Consultants, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions by the council? Councilmember Borjeli.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and thank you for elaborating on what's already in the report. I, I received an email, and I believe my colleagues did too, indicating that Hexagon is very biased and the city didn't do a good job in choosing Hexagon. And again, you just outlined the robustness of, of the services that Hexagon is gonna provide. So how, how do you answer that, that Hexagon is biased and we didn't do a good job in running the right organization to do this?
Well, we, we put it out there and we directly contacted other professional transportation firms, so we were hoping to get as many responsive. Hexagon provided a robust proposal that met the, the goals that we outlined. Hexagon, in our research and past work with them, obviously they work with the city, but they also have experience working with the county, working with municipalities all through the county and outside the county. So it, it's not as if they're working for Morgan Hill. Other communities are hiring them to do the work and they are doing work product for various communities. We do not believe that they're, they're biased in this plan. We have a nice sequence of how we're gonna develop this, and the first part of this is really developing our goals and our policies. And that's gonna come to you as a council to say, these are the things that are important to us before we get into many of the other pieces of the plan. So we don't believe they're biased. We, as city staff, will ensure that there's not a bias as they develop this plan.
And, and that, which is that council member, when we talk about bias, we're really talking about a legal concept that they have, that a, that a consultant has predetermined outcome. And, and that couldn't be further from the truth, and I think it's really outrageous.
If I'm not mistaken, if I can just jump in, if I'm not mistaken, council member, I think your, was your question geared toward bias on staff and who they selected, as, as he's describing?
Yes, it's exactly what the city attorney is describing.
I think it's, it's, it's outrageous to call a, a highly professional consultant who has professional standards that they're absolutely required to meet, to call them biased because a person doesn't like the outcome.
Right. Yep, thank you.
Um, so, um, the, the clock, we reset the clock. So I, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you for answering the city manager all my questions. I had the most on this particular item prior, prior to coming to this meeting. And, and thank you for answering my question and all the work that you have done in selecting this consultant. Thank you.
Thank you, council member.
We have comments.
We'll hold that when we come back for comments. Any questions, council member Spring?
Yeah, uh, thank you, thank you, Mayor, and thank, thank you for the staff report. The, the, what is our city policy, you know, especially for large contracts? When we, when we only get one response back, and, and the reason I'm asking this question is, it makes it regardless of who responds, right, but it makes it impossible then to compare it with that the base pricing we could get? Are they really the best ones? Is there some, just because someone doesn't bid doesn't mean there isn't someone just as good as, as this company around, right? Do we have a policy in place to say if it's more than a certain amount, we just need to do whatever we can to have more than one bid?
No, we don't have that policy as we can't force people to bid. Uh, it's, we just awarded a fire, the fire station on the, the same, the same piece. The council always has the option to reject a bid or request staff go out to try, try again. We, we aren't recommending that, but we always have that, that option. And if we thought that there would be a better option for lower pricing and a more experienced consultant, we would recommend that.
Right. Do, do, you know, this is, this is a topic every city has to deal with, right? So there should be an endless amount of consultant companies out there.
That is definitely not the case in this, in this area.
In this area, but what about outside this area?
I, I'm saying in this, in this profession, there's, there's a limited number of professional firms that do this.
So of the hundreds of cities in California, how many consultants are around helping those cities?
I, I don't know, Jennifer, you would say, how many do you work with regularly?
It, it's a very interesting question, Councilmember Spring, but traditionally traffic engineering firms, there's a common set of about in the Bay Area that I know of, recognize the names, like about twenty. And they typically, they don't do comprehensive planning necessarily. They do project specific work. And so finding a group that has the resources available to do a comprehensive master plan is challenging. And that's why we followed up with the firms that didn't apply, that we sent the RFP to, to find out why. And that was exactly what they told Chris was, they just don't have the resources to pull it off.
Is it just a matter of resources only, or is it a matter of the scope just not tailored to what those consultants can provide? I, I think, or maybe is the scope tailored too much towards that one company that now bid?
No, the scope was a general scope, and it was something that we worked on diligently together to figure out what we needed as far as an overall master plan and what information we needed that would feed into a future circulation slash transportation element. This work needs to be done, whether it's done now as a master plan or later as a transportation element of the general plan. The same work needs to happen. We're getting a little, a few extras here that are optional tasks. We're also doing the F B study for the transportation impact fee as well.
So when, when this was done a few years back, right, forgotten what window, this was never done?
This is the first comprehensive transportation master plan.
Oh, okay, stand corrected. I'm gonna scrap that question. Like he'll say, right, let, uh, I just wanna make sure I do my due diligence, and I don't wanna give you a hard time, but could you imagine that maybe those consulting companies talk to each other and say, well, I'm in Gilroy, so I cover Morgan Hill, you're in Sacramento, you cover Sacramento?
We definitely have transportation consulting firms that, that are, that serve this area, more than, more than one. I think.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but specifically, I, what I'm just wondering is that they have like a gentleman's agreement that they just don't encroach on each other's territory?
No, no, I think, I mean, but these, there's companies in the area, right? So if someone, the, the, depending on, and, and this isn't just for transportation consultants, this is for general contractors for anything. So you, you're based somewhere and you're bidding and you're spreading farther out depending on how your resources are, right? And you may go further and further depending on what the resources you have, but if there's work right next to where you're based, you're typically gonna do that work. And then, and then spread out, and that's what we see sometimes.
Okay, if I were to, to favor just trying one more time to ask for more bids, would I be wasting your time or would there be a chance we could find someone?
It's not our recommendation. I think we definitely have a complete proposal here. So now it's put out there. Anyone else will see what's happened. I don't know that we would get the same pricing or that we will get better pricing or that we'll get someone with someone better. So that's why we aren't recommending it.
Right, but if we were to do it, would but what, what would the likely outcome be the same or there's a good chance we would find another bidder or two? Or you don't know?
Yeah, i- i- it's hard, hard to say based on the responses I had. I don't know that we're gonna see ten responses come in for this project. We may find another one. We, we may find another two. I wouldn't think we would find very many, some of the responses I had.
So, so did that company do any other work in the city that might cause some sort of a conflict with this kind of work so that they almost would have to be their own cross check?
No. So they're gonna be developing policies. So if you, if we work through the scope, you're gonna, we're gonna see that they're, we're gonna be coming back to council at, at each, at each phase. This isn't, this isn't, this is, this is something that we're gonna be checking through it. So down the road, we have a transportation master plan. Are, is, are they gonna do work on future projects based on this transportation plan? They could. So could, so could any firm. It's not gonna preclude anybody from doing that. That is not, there, there is not a conflict.
We, so in the staff report, it says that this firm would use some other consultants from other companies. Do, do you, so what kind of control does the city have to determine who they would be working with?
So those have already been included in the scope and the costs that could be switched out. We've, they've been part of that panel and interview process, so we would have control on that.
And, and you are familiar with those?
We're familiar with some of the, we, we are familiar with representatives from the two key firms that I mentioned. We're in Apex. We, we've had past experience working with staff members on those. And we have, they have another engineering firm working with them as well that we've had past experience working with.
Okay. So, so those, wha- wha- what do you tell those of, including myself, who really would have liked to see a choice, right? And, and another bit of, what, what, what is a good answer to say, well, this is not a bad deal here and, and this is why?
Well, I, I think we, we put it out there. We had a lot of time for companies to respond and we, we reached out to them directly. And a company came through, submitted a strong proposal, has shown that they can do the work. And then on the price, I just say that we went through line item by line item, and the price that we're provided is based on estimates of hours and time to complete the task. So we're looking at those individually to make sure it's the right amount. So it gets down to how many stakeholders meetings are we doing? We're doing five meetings and those are all priced out so that we're looking specifically at the price to ensure that, you know, we're not, we're not being overcharged. So that, that's how we're trying to, to see what's happening. So they've given us that detail and we've worked through that.
We, time wise, is there a specific time we have to start this work or, or not?
Jennifer, to get to the circulation, transportation elements.
We, we'd like to have the transportation element updated by the end of twenty twenty-five. And that would follow this timeline. We have finished this project in I can't remember, twenty twenty-four, and then we'd be able to focus on the general plan update.
And then I'd also just note that we, we need to complete our speed survey, which is gonna require traffic counts. So we're trying to combine that together. And if we said we're gonna put this off for a significant amount of time, we would need to go out and do the speed, speed survey to support the speed limit update separately. So we're trying to link these two together because we, we continue to wait on that.
Okay, so hypothetically, if, if, if council were to ask you to just rebid again, ask for RFP again, what, what could such a timeline look like?
We, we would, we think we, we would the RFP out, contact consultants again, and try and get people to respond.
Right, but it's a matter of couple of weeks, half a year?
No, it'd be at least three to four months minimum.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Martinez Beltran, do you have any?
Yes, we do. Thank you. Chris, how long did this last bid take?
How long did the, I'm not sure I understand the.
When you put out the RFP, how long?
Today.
Not till today, from when you put it out to when it was due?
It was about three months.
Okay. And then will we be able to, you know, I'm listening to a, I'm listening and, and I agree, I did see that Apex and Tool were subcontractors for Hexagon. And are we able to put those out since they're doing the biking piece of it, then couldn't we just do the RFP for part of it?
Did you ask that question again? I'm not fully understanding.
It sounds like Apex and Tool are taking a good chunk of the RFP as subcontractors. Would we not be able to just do the other piece Hexagon is taking?
No. No, we can't. They, 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 the, the consultants come in as a team and they put the proposals together.
Okay. And then it says in here that this is, you were saying that this is gonna be for the general plan for the basis of it. So we can expect, let's say it ended, or we had this wrapped up by twenty twenty-five, when would, would you start the general plan? With this timeline, when are you looking to start the general plan? We would be looking to start the update of the circulation element immediately upon conclusion of this process. So in January?
No, it'll be closer to about middle of the next, next year.
You know, next year.
Yeah.
Okay, so we might have some time to do another RFP. And what would that entail if we did do another RFP?
We would.
Have we done, correct? Have the work's been done as far as?
Yes, we would update dates and do those sort of things to put it out again.
Okay. And is there any, is there any cost with that?
There's the staff time. And, and, and unknown results from the, the next, you know, next bid. You know, there's no guarantee that if we think, you know, if we reject this bid, the same bidder is gonna come in at the same price. They may not put it in and then, then we don't know what we'll get.
And I would say the likelihood is that once a bidder knows that they're the only bidder, they're not gonna lower their price.
Right.
We don't know. We don't know. We don't know what would happen.
No, we don't.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have a question after all.
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez Beltran, Councilmember Hovers.
Uh, thank you for this inclusive report. You said that you've been asked sort of, if you put this out again, you wouldn't send it to the people that already said no, right? You'd try to find other companies.
Yeah, we, we would send it to the, the list. We did a pretty extensive look of the major firms that do this through the state. So, so I think we'd have to send it to the same, the same list.
But you tried to add new ones.
And we would try, I, I, we, we would try.
Okay.
I don't know that there's just.
People that do it, you would send them that, but you didn't already send.
If we found them, yes.
If you found them. Okay, good. Thank you for the clarification.
Would you say the process was equitable? Yes. So many, many firms, more than one, several, let's say, had the opportunity to review the RP and bid on it. And only one chose to do that. I have a community member who has voiced his disregard for Hexagon in numerous pages of emails, texts, and other, other venues. He then provided names for us to contact that he thought were worthy and excellent and would have been the better option. Did any of those companies bid on this?
No.
Okay.
So we did reach out to, not just with any of the consultants that anyone shared, we, we directly reached out to them.
Okay, and they just chose not to. Is there any reason to believe Hexagon? Okay, and they just chose not to. Is there any reason to believe Hexagon isn't capable or competent to do this?
No.
There's no reason to believe that they are somehow going to be biased. Uh, that they're gonna kowtow to staff. But they're not gonna be uh. Willing to do the job that we've hired them to do and provide the information we're asking for?
No, there's no reason, and I think you could ask that same question of the other agencies they work for as well.
Is it possible, and not that we would know for sure, was it possible we go back out for bid, Hexagon could go, screw you guys. I'm not bid.
Yes.
And we could have no one?
Yes.
Okay. That's all my questions. Uh, we'll open it up for public comment. Do we have anyone wanting to comment on this?
Yes, we have. Um. I will call Doug Mirhead.
Because efficient government moving fast is not a good thing. I just, in my written uh comments, I uh complimented staff. On explaining why, whether we only got one bid, which always disturbs me. But staff went ahead and explained to us. The research they had done to try and understand why we only got one. And, you know, I think they deserve credit for that, and I don't think that we should. Necessarily feel like. As we only got one, something is wrong with the procedure. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm glad you asked. I would be very disappointed if you decided not to support um. The award of this contract just because we got one. You know, you might go out again. And you wouldn't get anyone responding. Um. Anyway, I, I have a experience with this with several other agencies, and I don't like it when the, the board or council or whatever. Isn't curious when you only get one response. And uh, an agency I'm dealing with uh. Was looking for consultants in Sacramento and uh. You know, they only got one, and it happened to be the one they were using. And when I inquired, they said, well. You know, our feeling is they talk to each other, and they don't wanna take business from each other, and. You know, the agency felt that it was okay, and in a different world, you might call that collusion and a restraint of trade, but none of that is there. And we have worked with these farm, these firms in, in other instances. So I'm gonna think staff did the right thing. I think, you know, they should be commended for doing. You know, a, a good job in trying to give us a quality uh result. So I do hope you approve this contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Any other comments?
And on Zoom, we have Joe Beranowski.
Yes, good evening again. For many years, there have been concerns that traffic engineers may approach traffic impact studies with an eye towards assisting developers. Expedite their development approval, rather than delivering an unbiased evaluation. Of the impact of the development on the surrounding traffic system. Without unbiased studies, agencies are not able to make wise decisions to preserve the capacity of infrastructure. Those words preference the best practices for traffic impact analysis. Done by Oregon Department of Transportation. If you don't appreciate the possibility of such bias. You should really open your eyes. On a technical level, there's nobody on the staff that has any way to judge. Whether the traffic impact studies done by Hexagon show evidence of bias or not. Nobody on the staff does more than a cursory look at the reports, the assumptions, what parameters used in the software model used to analyze impacts. The reason I was given for this is because no one on the staff has the quote required math background. In my written public comment, I've provided two examples that can be understood by anyone willing to use common sense. But to be clear, there are dozens of examples at the technical level that all point to the exact concern Oregon officials were addressing. In Morgan Hill, bias is not just a possibility. Rather than delivering an unbiased evaluation of the impact projects we'll have on our transportation network. Hexagon has repeatedly shown an overt bias towards assisting the city and developers expedite development approvals. That is not my opinion. That's what the public records show. What I want the residents of Morgan Hill to understand is that this bias is having consequences today. And those consequences are going to become more impactful as already approved projects we build out in occupancy. Not only have unrealistic assumptions been used in modeling traffic that new projects will generate. Human effects are being ignored, and what were called assumed complete infrastructure upgrades in twenty fifteen. Which are completely unrealistic are still being used to analyze impact, which new projects will have on a level of servants. Residents, visitors, workers, and first responders will experience as they try to get where they are going. The once in a decade transportation master plan comes at a critical moment. It should be a chance for the city and residents to get a truly impartial and unbiased look at the increasing disconnect. Between approved development and the transportation infrastructure. The results of this large investment of taxpayer money will in turn be used to set specific thresholds for what new development can be justified. And what transportation infrastructure will require moving forward. Residents must hope that city leaders insist on realistic assumptions be analyzed, not just best case unrealistic ones. I hope this study will take a comprehensive look at the known issue of fire and EMS first responder response times, which in twenty nineteen. Were determined to be twenty to eighty seven foot worse than generally accepted standard in large swaths of the city. The residents of Morgan Hill deserve a transportation plan that can be trusted. Hexagon is not the right consultant.
Your time is up. We appreciate your comments and your call.
We received a, we received an email, I think all of us did, from this gentleman uh with. Unfounded and inappropriate comments about staff, uh, and repeated some of them here. Do you mind addressing uh those concerns with those comments?
Sure. So in, in going through the written public comment, um, our team uh took a look at. Comments, and um I, I have some information that I can provide based on our review. Um, so one is just the focus on. On traffic. So wanna point out that this isn't just looking at traffic, right? It's, it's, it's a transportation master plan, and so. Um, traffic is just one of those elements. Um, it's important to remember that mitigating traffic congestion. Is important, but the city's priority is also on Vision Zero, developing multimodal transportation options. Reducing vehicle miles traveled, and so those are all very important. Um. As far as inaccurate statements go, there was a statement that ma- that was made that nobody on the staff. Even does a cursory peer review. Um, we need to, of course, point out that that's completely. Inaccurate and quite frankly, quite, quite frankly offensive um to state that we don't do. A peer review of the work and that we don't have the capability to do the math. Our planners, our development services director, and our. Engineer review the work conducted by our consultants. We, we re- review the scope uh for environmental analysis. From the very beginning, so from the scope all the way to the final reports. I think we've sort of already addressed the concept of bias, and so I won't go into that again. Um, but just to state that um the examples that were cited don't demonstrate any bias um in any sort of way. Uh, so also, I just wanted to point out the concept that state, saying that city staff and Hexagon look for any means possible to. Assist developers expedite their development, and of course, this is also a highly offensive statement. Um, that we would in any way look to expedite development for developers. It's uh false, and again, without proof. We uh have never really been known as a development friendly community. The city staff continue to work to ensure managed growth after the elimination of the residential development control system. The community does not see the number of projects that never reach this body. Because of the work that we do to review them and to work with the developers. Um, and so once again, the statement is far from the truth. And it's just another example of inappropriately discounting our professional work. I'm gonna, and so I think with that, I would conclude my remarks.
Thank you, Christina. Any other uh public comments?
No more speakers.
We'll close the public comment, bring it back for council discussion. Anyone, any comments or? It's question. Council member Borjoli.
Speaker, um, so, um. Thank you for elaborating on what I think is a, a big concern. Uh, about the email that we got. Um, so could you elaborate just one inch further? About uh the comment that the staff doesn't have the math requirements. Um, so talk about planners, engineers, uh, they, they go to college. Uh, you know, they, they come out with a degree. Um. We usually get experienced people in. So could you just talk to that one more time so we can nip, nip that in the bud? Because I don't believe our staff doesn't have the math requirements to analyze um a report like that.
Yeah, so. The comment was made that we don't even look at the work that's being generated from our consultants, and so what I had said is that's just. Wholly inaccurate, right? And so it's reviewed by our planners, our development services director, as well as our city engineer. And so I'll just look to um you, Jennifer, Chris, if you wanna add anything in addition to that about the work that we do. In reviewing the work that's done by our outside consultants.
I would just add that our deputy city attorney also reviews environmental documents when they come in.
Add that as well.
So it's multiple areas of City Hall that do this review. Um. Do we send it out to another consultant for a peer review? No, we review it in-house to make sure that. Um, all the statutory requirements are met, and the analysis makes sense.
Any other questions? I'm sorry.
No, go, go ahead, Chris.
No, I was gonna say ditto.
Okay, yeah. So thank you, Ma. That's all.
You're welcome.
I have my believers.
Yeah, I, I'd really like to address this. I'm very familiar with working with government contracts. I've done that in my past life. And really, this is extremely complete, I feel, in how this is presented to us, and I really appreciate. Staffs telling us that. All the things that were sent to us by or uh written correspondence, uh, you already addressed. We tried to get other companies. We tried to do this. We, you know, and thank you for your. Going the extra mile to address some of those concerns that were brought to our attention. Um. I see no problem with this. I understand that. I mean, I used to have the whole contract for BART in, in a maintenance type of way, and um. No one else would touch it. You know, it was just, it's the way it is. Um. People do specific things, companies do specific things, and like someone said, you can't make somebody bid on it. You can ask them again, you can ask them why, but um. They're not gonna change, and sometimes you actually lose the one bid you do have when you put it out again. So. Thank you for your time and diligence on diving the extra mile into this contract.
Council members, bring it.
Yeah, I, I appreciate all the work that's going in. The, I am kind of in Mark Murhead's uh camp, but tonight the teams. Uh, just feel uneasy when we only get one choice, right? And for me. One is not a choice. It's just, do I, do I go with it or, or not, right? That's my only choice. Uh, I, I, and when I don't think it through, I, 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 my assessment is I don't think the result would be different. Very unlikely it'll be different, or possibly even worse with no, no one bidding, or. Good, like we heard it tonight too, the, the same company bidding at a higher price, knowing they're gonna be the only one. So it's, it's, it's almost a no win uh to go down that path. But, you know, I remind myself, the development of the transportation master plan will require significant community outreach, right? I think this will be the opportunity for everyone and all the, the ones that have concerns, and there are many. We have to respect that. There are people in our community. Including myself are concerned about the traffic in, in certain areas, and, 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 and. Are our plans working or not, and then what, what, how do we address it? I think we have to take those concerns seriously, right? And I, I always think the best way to reach. Consensus is to include those critics, not to push them away, but include them in the process, right? It, the, the, no matter how one does not like a certain input. At times, there's always a, a piece of, of truth there as well, right? Whether, whether I like it or not, but that, and we have to be open to listen to other opinions. To come. Come out with the, the best plan for, for master plan for our community, and that includes all the various side, not just one side. But, but the critics and, and the one that just goes slow. Uh, I, I will, we'll, we'll go forward with staff's recommendation tonight because I don't see another option. Unless we just don't do it, but I don't think that's an option either. Um. I, yeah, don't know what else to say. How can we get more bids, right? That's really the, 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 the question here, right? And we can list uh ten other companies that will be just as, as good as this one, but if they're not going to bid, what do you want me to do? Right? I, I can say yes. I, I like that other company too, but they're not bidding, so. What do you want me to do? Um, so, yeah, so, so I will support it. A little bit uneasy because there's no choice, but uh hoping for the best, especially now in this many more. Cycles to come, when the community has to say, including us.
I agree, and I, I thank you for that, council member. I think we do, uh, we, we all need to, I'll, I'll come back in a second, but I just, uh, we do need to be open to differing opinions. And we need to also help some of our community members understand that they too. Need to be open to diverse opinions uh when they don't like what we have to say or what staff has to say. So I think. By, by committing to that, I think we're all gonna be committed to hearing different opinions and input, and we have to get plenty of it. By doing so, we'll come to the best possible solution. So uh enough, we need council member Martinez Beltran.
Thank you. Um, I do see that, I, I do see the concern, and, and I understand it. I think, you know, I'm, who knows, maybe some companies have heard. The challenges that we're having transportation wise, and that could be a reason too, because we certainly have. And um, and I, I absolutely don't wanna discount, um. You know, someone's words. I know that staff has done, I've had many conversations, and Chris actually gave a list of. Companies to follow up with, and he did. Um, and so. Yeah, that makes it even more painstaking for me, because I know that you reached out to some of those um that weren't on the list, and many that were. So I do really appreciate the work that you do. Um, you know, over the five years, I've had a chance to, to. See the work that you do and the dedication that you bring to it, and so, um. I know that you're really trying to, you know, we're always pushed between these, there's budget, there's time constraints, there's all of that. So absolutely agree with that. I also want to say, you know, as far as our, our residents, I mean, we too, and this particular resident. Lives in an area that has been quite challenged with um things that we've seen on council over the past couple of years with the tramal development. With, you know, and now we've got Goswinds, you've got the Cochran cause, and there's been a huge emphasis on traffic. They wouldn't, weren't even meeting some of the standards there, so. There's some real, um, I think, you know, mistrust that's happening there, and I think that's really what we're, what we're hearing. So in order to address that, I think we should try to include them in the process as much as we can. You know, I'm not. I mean, I don't know, we're going out, I'm open to it because it, there's not a cost to us necessarily. Um, but I also, you know, I think that. We did do, you did do what I asked you to do, and so I, I feel a little uneasy asking you to do even more. You know, I personally came and said, hey, make sure that you're reaching out to these. Did you hear from them? No, I haven't. Um. So that's, that's the hard part, but I do want to, you know, see how. Is there anything, maybe if you can ask around, is there what were, you know, some of the reasons that you think we're not? That, that we haven't understood yet as to why we're only getting one bid. Is there something out there talking about, oh, you know, Morgan Hill's got some transportation. Key, and maybe they're not wanting to step into that. I'm not really sure, but.
I think you may have, you may have missed that discussion, but um. Chris has reached out to a number of those folks who did not bid. Some did not reply, others did. So I, I think he, he has done that.
Yeah, no, I, I did hear that part, but I just mean, you know, maybe there's. There are reasons we can find out offline, so. Um, so with that, begrudgingly, I am gonna support it as well. I do understand the concern, and I hope that Hexagon will take it. Very seriously, because you know, the last thing I would hate is for us to, to face some type of a liability or something. Um, because the transportation plan is. It is the skeleton for our general plan, and that's one of the reasons why I'm, I'm open to going out one more time. Um. It just, that's the basis of everything. We're gonna really, you know, lay on top of that, and so. Really looking for them to um take a deep dive for us, and we've got some hotspots that they've definitely gotta uncover, so. Thank you.
Council member Borjoli.
There, so uh with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number uh sixteen, approve the agreement with Hex, Hexagon. Uh, including items one and. uh, including items one and two.
Okay.
Motion by councilmember Borjoli, second by councilmember Lebers, all in favor. Aye, aye, any opposed? None, that passes five zero, thank you.
The mayor, before we move, you may have just been about to do this, but before we move on, it's it's nine o'clock and it's time for your check-in.
I do, because we do want to wrap this up by ten ten, or we have to uh move to move beyond that. Uh, based on what we see here, uh, I I think we have approved uh update the city's donation. I think we can get through this in thirty minutes. Does everybody think we can make this happen? Can we move expeditiously to make it happen? If it doesn't, we'll have to, we'll have to go further, but ten minutes. Yeah, yeah.
That's on board.
We can do this in ten minutes. Get going. So e- everybody good with that? We'll keep moving forward then. Excellent, thank you. Uh, item seventeen, approve updates to the city's donation policy.
You leave to re- put consent calendar. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, City Council Downing Finance Director. The item review is for the council to review the proposed changes to the uh uh cities' donation policies. And the last adjustment we made, a change remained December, um, December seventh of last year. Uh, uh, council successfully reversed uh proposed changes and for the council to uh consider uh discussion. And the two changes that the staff come up with was the first one is to basically require the city employees to consult with uh our public city attorney here to uh review all the uh donations. Uh, this proposed change would ensure our donations that would be properly vetted and consistent with our laws and our codes and policies and guidance. And the other proposed changes includes the increase in threshold currently at five thousand or more to uh ten thousand uh to over ten thousand before donation can be accepted by the council. Even with the increased proposed threshold, uh, if the donors request the the donation to be accepted by council, we stop bringing it to the council for any donation as such as any request as such. And uh, that's the first my uh first part, and uh I would happy entertaining question.
I have a quick question I want to ask you first, and we'll go to the council here. Should the council decide to keep it at five thousand dollars? Anything over five thousand would also then have to come to the council for approval, is that correct?
That's correct. That's your discretion, yes.
Any any questions? Councilmember Martinez Beltran.
Why the difference from five thousand to ten thousand?
I just arbitrary number still out there because I I thought that the number that was brought up by councilmembers Renee Spring. It might perhaps will make potential concerning entertainment ten thousand.
Okay, um, and then I guess Dawn, this question is for you. Similar to selves, you know, you you can't accept money from someone who is going to be having something heard before council. How does that work with donations to the city?
The um, the FPPC regs don't apply to donations to the city. I think it's up to the council to decide if that's something that the council would want to have in the policy. Um, I think it, I understand the issue and I think it could be problematic if uh if there was a donation to the city being made by somebody with an application. So I I but I but the FPPC regulations apply specifically to campaign donations to individual councilmembers.
Okay, I mean, ethically, I think I'm just, as I read through the policy earlier, I feel like that's something that we're missing here and we should include that if somebody is gonna be having some item heard. We shouldn't be receiving a donation from them ahead of that, that just doesn't make sense. So there should be some type of a, you know, timeframe, I don't know if that's twelve months, I'm not sure what that would be. But I would ask if you could look at that and maybe look around and see what's what the standard is. We don't have anything specific, but a little bit more general in the existing policy is that, uh, let's see, it reads however, the acceptance donations must always consider the public trust. As far as the policy of the city of Morgan Hill, that prior to acceptance of donations, the department director of the receiving department must evaluate any impropriety or appearance of impropriety or a potential conflict of interest between the donor and the city.
And and I would say that that that's one of the reasons why we put in that there would be consultation with with my office because um, you know, somebody wants to make a donation to the police department. Um, the chief may not know that that person has a development application pending with the city. So that would be one of the reasons for that consultation.
Yeah, again, I I would like to see some type of a timeframe for that. I just think it's, you know, it's approach, and it doesn't necessarily have to be development. I mean, maybe they're paying them for a CCW, right? And they make some contribution and an application comes in a few months later. I just, I think we need to be careful about.
Well, the city attorney would say no too.
This way, we have a standard where everybody, right, has the same guidelines that they need to follow, rather than it being verbatim in an office and and kind of arbitrarily decided.
Councilmember, thank you, council councilman Lebers.
Yeah. Thank you, Al, for your report. I I do have some significant comments on this as a policy.
Oh, this is questions?
Yes, and now comes my question. Okay, there is not noted anywhere in here a timeline. So could, let's say we approve ten thousand, okay? Could they do ten thousand this month, ten thousand next month, ten thousand that month? Or is it an annual amount that they can donate or a quarterly amount? I think that needs to be written into the policy.
My suggestion, uh, I suggest that we make it uh annually. So if you make the ten thousand dollars in within a year, then uh uh, then that's okay, but we make ten thousand today and then before the end of the year, making a ten thousand, then that's where you probably go to council for acceptance. That would be my suggestion.
So that would be an addition, I guess, to this policy as written. I do have a question too. Back uh before I was on council in, I think, November, December, when I was in the audience, um, a company came forward wanting to give seven thousand dollars to the police department. Did they receive the seven thousand dollars, the police department?
Yes, they did, and that was reported in the council, uh, in the quality finance report, uh, as March twenty first. And we, I think we received in in April, I believe, and that was uh straight in the uh quality finance report.
Thank you very much. And then, um, also, I find it very unusual, I guess that's a good word, that a specific company is on three point three is called out into this policy. I don't understand why that company is singled out in a policy. So if you all take a look at uh three point three, I don't see it.
No, good.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong. Per city council direction, okay. Yes, they're talking about the December seventh meeting. But why is this written into a policy, the name of a company?
Hmm.
I don't believe that is appropriate, thank you. I uh I would need to have it be generalized from any company or something like that. Um, if we were to uh
And and it's it's in three point five, actually.
Oh, is it three point, I'm sorry, three point five. Oh, I see.
And I I I take your point, I I um, and maybe there's a better way to do it. There was a specific proposal from Shoe Palace to make a series of donations of items that would come at various times throughout the year, and the direction was, and maybe it doesn't need to be in the policy, it could be on a separate a separate document, and that was what the council direction was to accept those without having to come to council for each one of them.
Oh, okay, well, I understand that, but I think it, in any policy, I don't think a specific company should be named. So I think it should, you know.
I think there's another, a different way to document that delegation and we can look into that.
Okay, and um, so that was, let's see, what else did I have? Um. I am actually not in favor of raising this to ten thousand dollars.
Your questions, you're not making comments.
I know, I'm gonna get to a question.
And you don't, because you don't state what you're going to do.
All right, sorry. So if we leave it at five thousand, okay? Do we need to put it into a policy? Or is there already one existing that says five thousand?
The current policy, uh, the current policy said five thousand, also because the council is not uh not accepting the proposed chain number two, then that would be straight out, and then we could leave a five thousand as is.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, I
If you ask questions yet?
Yep.
Please, councilmember Spring, I will come back.
Yeah, uh, my my colleague, uh, Lebers just asked one. It's really also the accumulation of donations within a certain period. And that actually was was the key concern in December with with that one company or concern, other donations are appreciated, but they're just breaking it down so that they don't have to come to council, right? That was kind of uh, the understanding, which we asked uh um, city staff to come back then. Uh, but the, and I I, we had an email exchange, I don't see that correction yet. So if if the amount is exactly ten thousand, it's not covered by the policy here, uh, because the policy says below or above.
Yeah, so if the council wants to move forward with the change, the recommended change from five thousand to ten thousand, um, the recommendation would be to make it a little bit more specific to address what councilmember Spring has said. So it would say donations with estimated values, ten thousand or under, um, maybe formally acknowledged.
The uh, but this is a policy question then really, and then really my main concern is how do you how do you charge or prevent the potential conflict of interest, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your comment.
Conflict of interest, how do you measure whether it's a a real conflict of interest objectively, right? The and 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 that's, we don't have criteria in here, so it's it ends up being a subjective decision then by someone, right? Do you, for the attorney, a- and and I mean in a in a nice way. No, I I understand what you're saying, and I I I, there's a, there's a lot of validity to it. I think the problem of going getting too prescriptive is that then we're like, okay, there's, we're checking all these boxes, and if it checks all these boxes, we can accept it. And then there's always the the box that you forgot to add to the list. And so um, putting in the objective to prevent um, conflict of interest, I mean, we 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 say we're not gonna accept a donation that represents a conflict of interest, and that's really where it's up to us to review what's going on and make sure that we're not accepting a gift to the police department from somebody who of iPads, for example, to the police department, or somebody that wants a CCW. Um, um, because that would be inappropriate, and so we, it's and so we we want to make sure we're not, it's like, you know, it's hard to to it's hard to be super prescriptive and cover everything and not overcover things to a point where nobody's gonna be able to ever give a gift. So that's where we're, that's where we're trying to strike the balance, and I don't know the answer to that. And and the the reason why I asked to come back with with this really is, this is my main concern, right? This is real conflict of interest or perception of or perception of conflict of interest, right? So so if if, like I use an example, if a company uh, submitted for a permit to build something, some building in town, and 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 all we're also gonna donate you five thousand dollars or ten thousand, is that a conflict of interest, yes or no? Yes, and I think that that's not what's likely to come forward, unfortunately, it's not gonna be that. I I I I made this up as an example. If it's, if it's, um, I mean, uh, that's, that would, I, a cash donation um, when a project is pending is is troubling mildly. Um, what what's more likely to happen is something tangible that the um, that it, that a developer might offer as part of their project. Um, that could be something that would be um, that happens. In some cases, we require it, where they're asking for, so those are the kinds of things where we have to really look at it that each individual offer very specifically because um, for example, if somebody's coming for a planned development, we require public benefits and and some of those public benefits might be donations of land to the city, which is something that absolutely the city council has to accept, but the developer's not gonna donate land absent this development project that's gonna come forward because that's a public benefit in order to get that planned development approved. So that's where it becomes very complicated and very nuanced. I I a hundred percent understand the concern, and it's it's a very legitimate and valid one that that I share in many circumstances because it has gotten public officials in big trouble. And so that's, and that we absolutely want to help you avoid.
I'm gonna try to keep an eye on time to make sure we can. I I am done with questions. I have a quick question. We just left the policy as is, five thousand dollars. Can we avoid a lot of this? I mean, it's a policy we've had for how many years? There's not really been an issue. Anything over that, they've got to come to the council, and and if someone wanted to make make multiple donations, the council could approve that specifically or specific to that donor. But if we just left it as is, that's just what it's always been, right? And we could avoid a lot of this.
That's correct, yes.
Councilmember Borjoli.
So I I have two questions. One is, uh, I would like to address uh councilmember Lebers, is that okay, mayor?
Uh, not at this point, this is questions. So I would like to, because we're gonna need to go to public comment and then back.
Then I have a question for uh staff then.
Yes.
Um. So other than inflation and the cost of living, I I I think uh, I I think you do have a reason for raising this from five to ten, uh, other than the cost of living. I mean, things have gone up. So i- is there any way that you could just give some more reasoning to to bring it to ten thousand? Because, you know, again, for me, uh, it it sounds reasonable, but I I'm not sure of the true reason.
And councilmember, I have a, if it's okay with the mayor, I have a follow-up question to your question. What's the threshold at which we have to report donations to the state? Do you know?
No, I do, I don't, I'm off my.
I'm, I'm, I, in the back of my head, I'm pretty sure it's ten thousand dollars. Um, but I haven't done that research.
So nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents is not reportable. I would probably err on the side of rounding up, actually. Sorry, please. So, does that answer your question?
Uh, well, they didn't have an answer.
Um, I I'm not sure.
Well, okay, so we, so that would be one we have to follow up on. Uh, I don't know that that really helps you tonight, but we don't know the answer to your question. Am I hearing that right?
Yeah, I mean, so what you heard from DAT is ten thousand was a somewhat arbitrary number. It was just based on the fact that this policy was originally initiated in nineteen ninety-six. You know, and so it was five thousand then, so I think DAT just said ten thousand seems like a reasonable number.
Anything else?
I I I'll save this for the other part.
Okay, councilmember, have you already? Any questions? Let's see, because I'd like to expedite this right now. I'd like to go to public comment, we're gonna open public comment, anybody wanting to comment?
There are no members of the public.
Close public comment and come back now for council discussions, and we'll start with you, councilmember Borjoli.
I I, again, may I address?
Yeah, this is what discussion's all about.
Okay, so I'm curious to find out why you feel you wouldn't want to raise it to ten as opposed to five.
Good question. I I feel, you know, um, there are a lot of avenues for companies and people to make large donations where they get a tax write-off through a five oh one C three organization, okay? Such as community foundations, such as CLEF, which is community law enforcement. I don't understand why anyone would want to give the city ten thousand dollars. I can see five maybe in product or cash. I just don't understand it. So that's why I I think if you're giving that much money, you're gonna want to be able to write it off.
Our donations are taxed.
You know, it's, it's to your benefit to write it off on your taxes.
And councilmember, I would just, just to clarify, donations made to the city are tax deductible.
We're a five oh one C.
We're not a five oh one C, we're a separate, we are a public, we're a municipal corporation, which is a a type of a nonprofit corporation.
Okay, so so they they can give as much money as they want and write it off on their taxes.
I'm I'm not trying to give tax advice, but 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 yes, the donations made to municipal local governments are tax deductible.
And besides the tax benefit, I mean, a a reason might be, you know, we might have a business in town that wants to partner with us. We may be doing an event, and they want to say, you know what, we're gonna partner with you, and we want to donate X amount of money, or, you know, maybe it's just equipment. You know, maybe it's to supplement what we're already doing.
I can tell you what my discomfort is. I think in with public perception, uh, if we're saying, hey, we're gonna accept donations of some large amount, ten thousand, I think is a substantial amount of money. But there is perception that we as elected officials might be on the take. I don't think it bodes well for us as elected officials to be, you know, to be accepting money like that on behalf of the city. It obviously would come to the city. Uh, but I think, uh, if I recall from the December seventh meeting, I thought some concerns that were expressed, I thought were valid. Uh, and uh, so therefore, it's it's Uh, and, uh, so therefore it's, it's, it's uncomfortable for me. And I think, I don't think it's that much additional work on behalf of a donor to come before the council and say, I'd like to give you $30,000. I don't think that's gonna be a long discussion. I really think we'd be open to doing that. So I, I'm very comfortable with leaving it at the $5,000 level.
And so on this policy, if we leave it at 5,000, I still would want it incorporated some way that it's an annual amount or, or whatever, you know, I'm open to discussion, uh, as to what everyone's comfortable with. But I still think that needs to be in writing.
So that would be in section 3.3, we say all donations with estimated values exceeding, that currently says 5,000 must be formally accepted by the city council, exceeding $5,000 annually, annually exceeding 5,000.
Or whatever it is. Yeah. So, so I would want that added into, uh, the policy.
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Uh, so then are you making a motion?
I, I will make a motion. Can I make?
Please, go ahead.
Um, I, I think since we've got it here, we might as well address the policy. It sounds like there's some deficiencies to it, so we might as well look at it. And I agree, I don't think that, um, I think there should be some, maybe we do have checkboxes and you check it. I think that would make it easier so that both whoever is donating as well as the city understands, you know, these are the templates for if you wanna donate and what you wanna donate for. Um, I just think that's a good policy rather than us just taking money or, and if somebody's donating, you know, every single year and that kind of becomes an expectation for the city that they're gonna donate a certain amount of money, um, that makes me a little uncomfortable as well. So I would like to see us update the policy, put some general parameters in there and they're coming to coun, if they do come to council, I mean, it depends what we want. If we want them to just come to council, then, you know, they would have the parameters and they could read it. But it could be, I think the reason that staff brought it forward was because they were trying to take that and make it more administrative. If you have those checkboxes, that could help it. And if there is a one-off, you said, well, you know, then what about the people who, they, they don't quite qualify? They could just come before council. And that, that seems like an easy fix to me. So I'm comfortable with 5,000. I'd like for us to have a little bit of designation. I would like for it to not be, you know, a consistent every three months. Um, I think there should be once a year or some type of a, a timeline to it.
Councilmember Spring has a quick comment or comments?
Uh, so, so I, I, I think there are a couple tweaks that make sense, uh, as we discussed it. I think, and just the discussion itself, I think was good. Uh, it's, for me, an important, uh, topic. But I like, for example, the ad on, so the employee shall be responsible or consulting with city attorney's office. That wasn't in before, right? And I, I think that's, that's a good, uh, adjustment on the amount, uh, don't have a sleepless night. So I think it's okay with me. Uh, um, my main concern is just really that we, we prevent the perception of conflict of interest, right? That, that is, and how do we do that, right? And if it has to come to council, then it's our job to prevent that, right?
Correct. Yep.
So, so that's really what's behind.
So here's what I'm hearing.
I'm okay with it. Yeah.
Just one comment, last item that we looked at. What would it look like if we had taken a donation from Hexagon a year ago and then we're having this conversation that we just had?
Good point. Good point. And I, I think it emphasizes the concern about, uh, and then probably because we already do business with Hexagon, we would have, we would have said, no, thanks. I, I think the council probably would have come to that conclusion. That is the checks and balance that we are here. That wouldn't have come to council. It would have been said no before. Very good. Well then, very good. So I think that what we have here though is, I, I think there's an agreement that we wanna keep it around five, that, that keep it at 5,000. But there are some tweaks. I don't know that we have enough to make a motion to do anything.
Yeah.
Might we say to staff, come back with the tweaks and do you understand the tweaks?
I don't necessarily think that we have to come back. Um, I think if I, would that's help to summarize them? I think, um, what we heard from Councilmember Spring is to keep in the statement about same employees be responsible for consulting the city attorney. I think we're gonna keep it at 5,000 in a calendar year. And then, um, in addition to that, um, I mean, that's.
Remove the shoe palace.
We'll remove the shoe palace.
We'll address that as well.
The, the delegation of authority that the council has already provided will remain, but we're gonna address that independently.
Make it a lot or, yeah, it don't, yeah, call out a company. Yeah. So I, I, with those, I don't think we need to come back.
We call that the motion?
Absolutely. And then, yeah.
With that, do I have a motion?
Yes, you have a motion from me with the, um, it, what we just talked about. So.
I mean, what if, if somebody wanted, if, let's say they made a $5,000 donation and then Freedom Fest, they wanted to, you know, support something, could they come back to the council?
Sure. Sure. We would, we could then decide, yeah, we'll take the additional amount.
So you're not, you haven't strained so much.
Yeah. Yeah, that would make sense.
But the guidelines would be once a year. Okay.
Right. So we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have two seconds. I'll take Councilmember Bojoli for, Bojoli for a second. Uh, all in favor?
That's a Councilmember.
Right. Councilmember Spring gets the second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None? Passes 5-0. Thank you. We, we are now, I don't think we're gonna make it by 10 o'clock unless I get commitment from my coun, my colleagues.
What's next?
So we can do this item 18 and then future initiated agenda items in 25 minutes. Can we do it? Or do we need to push it out a 30 minutes?
I think we can.
I think we can do it. I will hold you to the time. We're not making a decision. Well, I know. I did, I thought the last, I thought 10 minutes was good. Okay. So I, uh, council, uh, item number 18, provide direction to staff on proposed future council initiated agenda item. Uh,
Yes. Thank you.
Please.
Okay. So council policy 9701, um, really lays out how council members can bring forward future agenda items. And so bringing this item, um, forward tonight, um, the specific item is related to term limits. And so this was brought forward at the May 3rd meeting by Councilmember Spring. Um, and so Councilmember Spring wants the council to consider whether they want to hear a topic on considering implementing term limits for both city council and commission members. Um, Councilmember Spring forwarded, uh, an email and that's attached describing what he wants, um, the council to consider. But basically the office, the mayor has a tier term and the city council member offices have four-year terms and no maximum term limits. The government code does establish, um, the method to propose a limit on the number of terms that council member may serve. And to change that would require to go to, go to a vote at the people. Now, on the other hand, changing, uh, and adding term limits for commission members is something that council can decide and it would just, uh, require modification of our municipal code. And so with that, I think our process has been to turn it over to the council member to add any additional comments and then to open it up for questions.
Very good. Thank you.
Uh, you summarized it nicely. Thank you, City Manager. Uh, I, the, what I like about our new process, why I'd like to have a discussion, right? We don't have to decide whether or not we'll do something. But, uh, I know this is, this is a topic of interest to many in our community too. And I listed a couple, uh, communities that voted on term limit proposals last fall and they all had 75% plus approvals of all those, um, proposals, uh, the one I found. So this very popular, uh, I, I personally have, um, just, I'm very open with that always being, uh, in favor of term limits on any, any level, even on nonprofit boards, uh, I recommend that, that term limits. Uh, that's just me, but I, I'd like us to have a discussion and listen in what the people in community think. That's a good idea, is a bad idea? Uh, and I, I'd like to hear from my colleagues too, yeah?
Councilmember Bojoli.
I, 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 I'm, I'm sorry. I, I think a Councilmember Leapers was first and so I'll go, I'll go out to.
Too polite.
Councilmember Leapers.
Um, thank you. Um, I, um, I do have a question. Okay. It is, um, for city council members and commissions, both? Is that how I guess?
That is that, and that Councilmember Spring brought forward.
The elected person is our treasurer. We need to include that person if we're including all these others. City treasurer is an elected position.
Well, the council, the council, if I must, I could decide that.
We, we, we could, it opens up a whole different topic, right? The, the, you weren't on the council when we actually were having a discussion of, uh, changing to the treasurer being, uh, appointed as well. And then.
Always been elected.
Right, but.
Yes.
There was a discussion and then we decided not to, but we changed the city clerk from elected appointment and, and that had to be voted approved.
Yes.
Uh, I'm open to have a discussion, but that's for me another discussion.
Yeah, I wanna make sure, right, right now, it's, it's about questions and we'll come back to council discussion so we don't get, get sidetracked here.
I think it should all be included.
Yeah, that's fine. But, but it's questions. So Councilmember Bojoli?
Sorry.
That's, that's okay.
So, Councilmember Spring, um, you.
Yeah, he's, he would be the staff. He's the one who brought it forward. So feel free to ask.
You, you.
I'm, I'm totally confused.
We are indicating that there's a, a, a problem. And I, I would like to understand it because I, in my district, have heard zero. And in my sphere of influence, I've heard zero. Uh, did, uh, you know, I meet with the downtown association in the chamber and many businesses. I have heard zero issues or problems. And, uh, to, to initiate this and cost the city 60,000 plus dollars, I, I, I just don't go along with doing that when there's a non-issue. And again, I wanna be emphatic. I have heard nothing of a problem or concern. And, and I have the same amount of constituents. I have 8,000. But, but I, I, I have a bigger sphere of, of, you know, of, of people I speak to. I've heard zero issues. So I don't wanna spend $60,000 on an, on a non-issue. It just, I mean, that's like, and, and it still rubs me the wrong way, you know, a, a, about the FAMPS Act, you know? It was, you know, we went forward with that and it cost the city 85,000 in litigation. Now, I didn't vote for it, but I'm just saying, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be frivolous. That money can go towards police and police equipment. And so I, I don't, I don't believe there's an issue unless you can convince. Now, I, I, I realize you get emails, especially from one person, uh, indicating that there is problem. So that one person, it is not everybody. I'm sorry.
Okay. I, I let me address that. I, I don't need emails from unspecific person. I've had that on, on my, uh, uh, campaign platform in, in 2016 already that I, I am for term limits in our city. So there's nothing new to them. Very open to that. Do I do think I, maybe we, 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 we socialize in different, uh, groups, but it's definitely a topic of interest. I've been approached, uh, uh, from many people that know what I stand for, that they support that stand and like, like this, right now, I'm only asking for us to have the discussion, not for a decision. Wanna make that very clear, right? But it includes also the commissioners, right? And we have commissions where we had commi, commissioners that just blocked seats for centuries almost. Uh, I'm exaggerating, but, uh, this really prevents new, newer people to come in and join commissions. And those are, are very likely than future council members down the road, right? The, some of us will not do this forever, right? And someone else will have to step in, but those long-term commissions are already out, that they're not gonna do it or they would have run already, right? And, and, and we heard it even from applicants, right? They're very frustrated that there's no open seats in certain commissions because we keep, uh, reappointing the same ones over and over. And, and, and just, um, uh, until the last election, right? That we had council members that were on this council for 20 plus years, right?
Yeah, but, but, and that, that may be true.
That's right.
But, well, if it's not right, then the, the public has to step up to the plate and run against that person. It's very simple.
That's, that's one, that's one way of.
Every four years.
Or the residents can say, we want to have term limits, right? Because then it's very hard to kick out the sitting council members. We, we know that. It's not easy. But i- if someone knows after two terms, one, a seat will be up, that would, that will encourage more members in the district I live to prepare for the time when my seat is up for sure. And it doesn't even matter whether I run or not anymore. They will prepare and they, they will, will have a campaign team in place and run.
But they, they can run against you. So I, I, I don't get your rationale.
I'm gonna jump in there again because what we, again, what the council member, uh, Spring indicated, this is all simply about, uh, we can have a larger discussion. And in that larger discussion, we can kind of have this back and forth. Uh, so it, uh, I agree where we're going. Is it enough to have? Okay, let's do, have the, have the staff do some research on it, bring it back and what would that look like? It doesn't mean at that point in time, it gets the majority vote, that there's a greater discussion and we could figure out the direction we wanna go.
Can I make a comment? Or, or do I have to?
Please don't jump in. I think, I think this is sort of a free for all when we do this sort of conversation. So go for it. We will need to get to that here quickly as, as we have open public comment.
Yes. Okay. Um, now you made me.
Think about that. You good? Cause I can go to Yvonne and come back. Did you have any comment? I don't know if you have any comments.
He's gonna run against Renee. No one's gonna run against Renee. He doesn't have to run to show his alliance for this two-term thing. You could step in and let somebody else run.
I know, but that's, we're talking about two terms. I mean, one option is three terms, right?
True.
I do also see, you know, having been on the council now in my fifth year, I, I, I do see, um, there's lots of value in knowing staff. There's lots of value in, you know, knowing your job. But, uh, I do think that we need, we need new ideas as well. And, um, and these commissions, these are places where people get, you know, their training wheels, quite frankly.
I'm gonna take this last comment and we're gonna go to public comment.
Okay. Um, I do feel like, especially at the commission level and at our level too, is there's a wealth of knowledge. We have a planning commissioner that, you know, has been forever on the planning commission. But that particular person has a wealth of knowledge that he brings to his commission. Uh, when I was on, uh, Parks and Rec, we had a commissioner, I think he's still on also. And his background was so valuable when we came to making decisions. And, um, also I agree with what Yvonne says. It takes a while to know what you're doing. In our position and on a commission, you gotta learn the, the whole government thing. You've gotta learn what your responsibilities are and that takes time. Some people need four full years to be really comfortable with being in whatever position they're in. So, uh, yeah, yeah.
We're gonna go, we're gonna go to public comment. You can open public comment. Anyone wanting to speak?
Yes, we have Joe Bernalski.
Yes, good evening again. Uh, let me be clear that, uh, the following comments are my opinion. They are not based on substantial evidence in the public record, unlike everything else I spoke of tonight. I do agree with, uh, Councilmember Spring that, uh, term limits may encourage additional candidates to run. I, I believe that we need additional candidates to run and we need a council that eventually might look at, um, spending about 5,000 times more time on the historical society than on the transportation network and think maybe that's not right. I think we need new blood that would, uh, question why a person who has no vested interests would just make up something as specific of a reason as to why current staff does not consider traffic impact analysis. And I somehow just came up with the words that it's because the current staff doesn't have the proper math background. That is outrageous. If we wanna talk about outrage just tonight. So I do support this, the request to consider term limits. And I hope that you will at least let the residents, uh, get a report as to the pros and cons of it. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, we have Miguel Jimenez.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Um, good evening, council and city staff and mayor. I'll be quick. Um, I support the idea of having a larger discussion about term limits. Seemed like there was a lot of discussion about the pros and cons during the meeting, but I think the motion, if I'm correct, is just to have city staff do some analysis, get some input, um, to have a larger discussion about term limits. And I, I think that's a worthy endeavor. Um, thank you.
No more speakers.
Okay, we'll close public comment and I think we've had enough discussion then. So I will entertain a motion if there is one.
Uh, could someone please say the emotion?
Yeah, the motion, the motion would be to bring to direct staff, you just check it out here. Yeah, the motion, the motion would be to bring to direct staff, you just check it out here, we would direct staff to bring back a staff report based on what term limits could look like if we were to move forward with them.
And what, okay, so if they do that, what would our decision be at that point? Would we gather information?
We would then talk about it based on the staff's report. We would have a discussion similar to this, but then we would, then we would vote probably to move forward with either taking it, putting it on the ballot or saying, no, we're not interested.
Okay, so there would be a decision made after the staff report.
Correct.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion? Yep, I'll make the motion, motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Second it? All in favor?
To hear it, right?
I'm sorry.
But what? The motion is to hear it, but it comes back to staff?
Yeah. Yeah, the motion is that the staff will bring back a full staff report
Okay.
regarding this item.
Got it.
I've got a motion. Second. All in favor? Aye. I. That was opposed? Passes four to one. Okay, well, we're almost there. 10 minutes to go. Now for future initiated agenda items, I'm going to start. I have a few that I would like to talk about. I would like to, I would like for the, to to have a review of the entertainment, either permit or license and address some of the concerns around adult cabaret shows or show or however we want to address that, just in the fact that it would be not, not that it's illegal, but that we would make sure that these sorts of events are screened from public view so that children under whatever age, 18, 20, 18, do not have view of those from public places.
I'm sorry, you, you want to bring what? You want to bring exotic dance? Well, I I didn't hear, I didn't hear what your comment was.
I would like to have a discussion about adult cabaret shows and that any business who puts them on would have to have have them screened from public view.
Okay, I see.
That's the first one. Second one, I do, I would like to have a consideration around an ordinance regarding fundraising or panhandling in our medians. I've seen more and more of this, especially around Monterey and Dunn Avenue. I'm setting out there with signs, collecting money. I think it's unsafe. And so I'd like to, and I I will provide information on what other ordinances look like. And then the third one that I would like to take a look at is, I've been very dissatisfied with PG&E and their response to us that last meeting. I thought they were quite defensive. They haven't responded to the questions that we've asked about. And I don't think they're capable or even competent of being able to provide the service that we need. I would like to take a look at overturning the previous council's ordinance of banning natural gas in new construction. I would like to consider bringing that back and allowing natural gas to be provided in new constructions. And that's all I've got. Anybody else?
I would like to say. I specifically asked PG&E how much of our utilities are underground and somebody and how much is wires, you know? And I never got an answer. And that's important thing, I think.
Right. No, no, I don't know.
I would like for us to hear the item on longer time for agendas. And I would also like for us to talk about a policy on local require and items that we talked about earlier.
Okay, and again, both of us have the responsibility of providing something in writing
Okay.
in order for that to be considered. Anything? Okay, there being no other business, we are adjourned. Thank you. Yeah, good job. Thank you.
No, really, I mean, it's been a long.
I want adult.